Yeah, but it's here. Well, there. That grew up something about. Three states. A little guy with eyes.
Steve. Jim with that. System of six residents. Jimmy is two. Assistant for President.
I'm unable to hear anything. This is Joelle and Courtney.
Are we able to see other people online? And are they, can you see the people online?
Yeah, definitely.
Feel free to grab a chair.
Courtney, be honest, I listen.
I'm like. There's more chairs, that's a lot.
In the other seat.
Is that better?
Yes, I can hear now. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so our purpose tonight is to describe just what community nursing is, why we feel it's needed in Enfield, and to outline our plans for bringing this about. Let me, let me name the other members of our project. I need to stand up to do this, since you may want to ask questions of any of them. My co-chair is Emily Curtis, Cindy Lauren, Donna Pidgen. Barnum, who you'll hear more from in just a moment. As Ed said, we also have the team from Lebanon, who as you'll hear, plays a big hands. Specifically, you'll hear. So let me introduce Kristen Barnum. She's a resident of Enfield, a longtime nurse, and most importantly, she's the executive director of the Community Nurse Connection. And she'll explain what that is.
Thank you, Steve. And if we can advance the slide, please. So up here, you'll see a little bit about what community nurses. About what they do instead of reading from a slide. So I'm going to tell you a little story about Jack and Diane. Jack and Diane are in their eighties. They've lived in Enfield all their lives. Jack, Diane has chronic illnesses, including heart disease and diabetes. And Jack has some mild dementia and has just been told by his physician he shouldn't drive anymore. Diane knows about the community nurse from the town newsletter and the town website, so she calls the nurse and asks for a home visit. The nurse schedules a home visit in their home to do an in-depth assessment. She learns Diane takes over ten medications for her chronic illnesses, and Jack has new medications that he doesn't really understand. Diane is concerned how she's going to get healthy food because of her diabetes and Jack not being able to take her to the grocery store. She's also really worried about how she's going to get to the doctor's appointments and to pick up her medications. After the initial assessment, the nurse goes to see Jack and Diane once a week for three weeks, and together they develop a care plan. The plan includes changing some of the in-person medical appointments she has to telemedicine. It also includes getting some pharmacies, some medications delivered from the pharmacy to their home. They also talk about scheduling family and friends to take Diane to the grocery store and to the local farmer's market to make sure she can meet her dietary needs. The community nurse then reduces her visits to monthly, and they start talking about advanced care planning. And all of this is at no cost to Jack and Diane. You want to switch the slide for me, please? So often when I talk about community nursing and filling a gap, I get questions about other services that are available to folks like Jack and Diane. And I thought I'd start talking about the Visiting Nurse Association. So why does the visiting nurse see Jack and Diane? Well, they are tied to Medicare and Medicaid regulations. And even though there's a lot going on with Jack and Diane, they don't meet the skilled Medicare and Medicaid guidelines for the visiting nurse to come visit them. In addition, they have to be homebound, and even though Jack is not able to drive and Diane doesn't have a driver's license, that doesn't meet the definition of homebound, so they don't qualify for visiting nurse services. They don't yet qualify for hospice services, but the nurses are going to start about advanced care planning, so when it's time, they're ready for hospice care. And also care managers, maybe that work at Masoma Clinic or at Dartmouth, they don't do home visits. And so they're not able to do that in-depth home assessment. And many of us nurses know, if you call somebody on the phone and ask them if they have the right foods and they have everything they need in their home, I can use my mom as an example, she'll say, absolutely, I'm just fine. But when you go out to the home, you see all kinds of different things that the community nurse can assess for. All right, next slide, please. Um, as Steve mentioned, I am the executive director for Community Nurse Connection, which is a local nonprofit organization that has been supporting community nurses for over ten years. And as you can see, some of the programs, some have been in existence for over six years, Hanover, Norwich, Thetford. We have a new program in Tunbridge, Vermont. And a lot of, the main thing we do to support these communities is give access to a data collection system. So it's, it's secure, it's from Vanderbilt, and it's a way for the nurses to document the care they're giving, interventions, outcomes, and client satisfaction reports. We also provide seed money, and we've already committed to giving $5,000 to the community and field nurse project. And we do ongoing small grants, and Rachel and Amanda can tell you that we paid for some Spanish lessons for Amanda. We supported a trip for them to go to Maryland to learn more about a community nurse and paramedic program. And I think recently, American Nurses Association credits for Rachel. So we really want to make sure that the nurses get the support they need to care for the clients in the community. And you'll also see a little bit more of the data in an upcoming slide that Rachel and Amanda will present. Next slide, please. So details of our proposed plan, as was already said this evening, we're here hoping, asking the select board to create a town account for us to store donations. The project members who Steve introduced are committed to raising the funds needed for the community nurse program from private foundations, grants, and, and some private donors. Then, as we talked about, that, that there would be a contract with the city of Lebanon for ten hours of nursing per week for Enfield. And then the, along the line, we're looking for the select board to create an official committee that will evaluate and analyze some of the data from the reports I talked about and client satisfaction information. So now I will turn it over. It's my honor to have Amanda and Rachel here to really talk about stories of community nursing.
You come closer to the owl, although I do have a very loud projecting voice. Someone actually told me that this weekend, and I was like, wow, thanks. You can go to the next slide. So I'm Amanda St. Iveny. I've been one of the Lebanon community nurses for about a year and a half. The program previously in Lebanon was the Light Team, the Lebanon Interdisciplinary Geriatric Health Team that was closely knit. It worked with Crafton County Senior Center, Service Link. Donna, were you part of that program at all? Kind of. And then it just kind of disintegrated during COVID, like many things. So when it came back to Lebanon, came into the fire station. So we wanted to just talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we do and just use some very small stories because we want to leave time for questions, and I can talk a lot. So just this first three months of this year with forty hours per week between the two of us, so we're each currently twenty hours per week, we've seen over thirty-four clients, and that just means maybe we get a referral and we talk to them one or two times on the phone, and it turns out they're actually all set. Or with some people, if they're having a fairly acute crisis, we might see them two or three times in a week. It really just depends. But once people kind of settle in, like the Jack and Diane story, our model is we do a phone call one week and then a home visit on the off weeks, so sort of every other. And if people are doing well, we take a step back. If they need us again, we can take a step in. If the visiting nurses are starting to come, then we don't really overlap. Sometimes we will do warm handoffs with them. Or with somebody that they've seen a lot, I can be like, hey, let me tell you some things that you need to know about Rachel, just in case something's going wrong, and you're like, is this normal? We have an established relationship, so we can say, that's normal, or more often, that's new. So you can see the four hundred and fifty-five encounters total, so that's phone, email. And we can communicate with the healthcare team electronically, so that includes all of those. And what we're really working on doing is quantifying and really defining how prevented hospitalization or ED visits can be captured. And what we really want to say is they're unnecessary visits. We don't talk people out of going to the hospital if they need to go. It's more of, one time we found a very nice woman who was our person in the hallway, and she was on oxygen, and she was halfway between her apartment door and the front of the building, and she was stuck. And so we were able to assist her back to her apartment. If she wouldn't have done that, she would have had to call the ambulance, she would have had to come. Maybe they would have taken her home, but we got her back to her oxygen. She was great. So that was a time that we really felt like her next option was going to be calling 911 for help. So that's a way that we can prevent that. And then just a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago, was doing a home visit, and someone had been out of their Lasix for three days. So we were able to communicate with the healthcare team, get them an extra prescription just for three days worth, and then they went to pick it up, and it wasn't there, so that person called me again, and then I called the care manager and said the prescription is still not there. So we were able to sort our way through that. So that's just a couple of examples of the prevented, the unnecessary hospitalization or ED visits. And then this assisted clients remain safely at home. That's really, it's kind of more of a, an subjective thing, but for one group or one couple that I've been seeing for a long time, they now have private pay caregivers in their houses, but at all. So they're actually part of the geriatric healthcare team at APD, so they will get a home visit from their PCP, which is great. But then she won't see them for another three months. So I went in today, actually, and I said, okay, it is true, caregivers are filling their medication boxes appropriately. Her weight still is exactly where it's supposed to be. She can still stay here. This is working.
So I'm Rachel McMillan. I worked at DH in inpatient neuro forever. Then the pandemic hit. I was in the, well, I did some travel nursing, then came back. I was in the neuro ICU when the pandemic hit, and that was not a whole lot of fun, so got out of there. Went back to school for my master's in public health and was actually interviewing Amanda and Jeremy, our paramedic. And they said, you know, we have an open position, so, you know, when you're done with school, you could come work with us. So that was how I ended up in this role, and that's just a little bit about my background. I love the position because it combines public health and nursing and getting nursing out into the community. And so, yeah, that's just a little bit about me. So on to our next three points here. The improved understanding of medications is huge a lot of times. And I know going from inpatient world to now being in the community, we prescribe all these medications. We think we're doing a great job. We discharge people home, and they are taking them either not at all, not as prescribed, or they're just sort of making it up as they go along. We had a patient that was on Norvasc. She was supposed to be holding it if her systolic blood pressure, her top number was under one hundred, and she had just decided to make that number one twenty. So we're able to kind of confirm with the healthcare provider that it is supposed to be one hundred and then confirm back with her. But again, if we weren't home, if we weren't in the home with her, we wouldn't have this information. And just doing, that's just one tiny example, but just doing a lot of medication teaching with the patients in the homes. Reduced fall risk, again, there's a ton of different examples of this, but a lot of it is getting equipment. I don't know, have any of you met John from the Lions Club?
Yes.
Okay. He is fantastic. If you need anything, he is on it, like within five minutes. You better need it now because he's going to get it. Anyway, so we had a patient that had had knee surgery of some sort. She was in a brace. She was having to go up and down stairs. She had a shower with no shower seat, so we were able to get some measurements on that, get ahold of him. He happened to be at the Listen Center when I called him. So she also needed a backpack because she could get up and down the stairs, but she had crutches. So she had no way to carry the food or anything up and down the stairs. So he not only got her the shower seat, but he said, oh, I happen to be at the Listen Center, and they had a backpack. So, you know, he just delivered everything. So reducing that fall risk for people, getting them equipment is a big thing. And then communication with PCP, as Amanda mentioned, we can do in-basket messaging. We can also, you know, just do the old-fashioned phone call. For the offices that aren't on the DH system, don't have that in-basket messaging. And we do a ton of that, just cutting through the red tape. I'm sure all of you have noticed recently, if you're trying to get ahold of your physician, it's not able to get around some of that and get ahold of them. An example of that, we had a patient recently that had been calling 911, had been hypoglycemic, but then had been refusing to be transported. So there's no way really that the physician team knows that. So we were able to talk to her, let her know that had been happening. He did eventually get admitted, and then he was discharged. We went to see him today. He had not picked up his prescriptions after he was discharged. He was taking old prescriptions. He was taking prescriptions wrong. I mean, really, just one of these, it was just sort of, he was just making that up and winging it. So again, able to call her, let her know, like, things are not ideal, and he's going to end up back in there and hopefully get things situated before that happens, so.
Hey, I'm going without prestige. Okay, there he is.
Thank you. Thanks for, hope you for coming and helping us out. So just to wrap this up, we feel strongly that there's a need in Enfield for this kind of service. Community nursing is effective and successful in many towns in this region. It's a prudent model. We're proposing to, with the help of Lebanon, to provide ten hours of nursing a week. That costs about thirty thousand a year. Our, our project, our committee is committed to raising those funds over two years. Community nursing from foundations and private donors, and I may be explicit. There's no expectation that the town will fund any of this, and it's free to the, to the recipients of the care. So with that, we'll open it up for questions. It might help if you directed your question to either, well, either Kristen, who's the community nurse expert. I distinctly not that, or any other member of our committee.
Steve, typically, I'd like to start with the board, and then for the purpose of minutes, we know the board members' names, although since there's so many people in the audience, I'm going to ask the board members to just say their names since we don't have placards. Same thing, if you have a question in the audience, if you would say your full name for the record, that will help us take minutes. Want to start at the end of the table? Eric, do you have anything?
I have lots of questions.
How do I know?
All right, so I spent a lot of time thinking about this. So I'm Eric Russell, perfectly, live on the street. That'll be reasonably brief and effective. Right, so you finish up with describing what community nursing is, why it's needed. One of the big questions is, we sort of need two big questions. One, one of which is, why is town government the solution? We don't want it to evolve into like a discussion around healthcare in America. But why is town government the solution to this problem? Why don't other organizations, you know, there's got to be a hundred healthcare organizations in the upper valley. You know, why aren't any of them addressing this? And a lot of that is that this is a big change in town government. It's a huge change in scope. And I have concerns around our existing staff's ability to manage such a thing. It's outside of our expertise. It's not really appropriate to put somebody on the spot, but can I ask you a question? Like, why is, why is town government, why is Lebanon government the solution for community nursing with Lebanon?
So I would, I would say it's a new model for us, under the town government. We found it to be effective in the, in the sense that it integrates with EMS system. So one of the primary objectives is access to these patients and making sure that we're providing that follow-up. Oftentimes, we transport a patient, they come back, that patient may not get the follow-up, they go home, just like the nurse has said. So there's a better interaction between the EMS system and the community nurse system to make sure that patients are getting the ongoing care that they need. It seems to be a little more, from our experience, a little more organized, a little more structured, and in the sense of how the program is facilitated. As you, as you heard them explain, the program kind of just dissolved during COVID. Some of that was due to COVID. But even before COVID, there was discussions because as far as how it was being facilitated, there wasn't a lot of structure. It was under the Human Services Division indirectly, so it just provides more structure under a more formalized, or should we go?
Would you like to adjust the why is town government the solution? I know you've thought about it.
Well, if, when I think back at the history of our organization, we, we focus back on the eighteen hundreds where nurses had, the towns had nurses. And there, there is this gap, and so our founders really this need with town nurses. So we've tried the model for, for ten years, and it's working in the other communities. You know, we, we love to be able to work with Lebanon and Enfield to show that we're reducing the stress on EMS systems. We, we don't have that information yet.
We frequently are working with the VNA, with Bayada, you know, with the other organization, but there are gaps currently. Like, there are staffing gaps. There are lots of reasons, as you said, we could talk about it for hours, that there are gaps. So it's also just working to kind of fill some of those and help with the, you know, coordination, communication, creation.
And just to add, I got involved with the project because I collect all of the ambulance data for the town of Enfield, and I could immediately see how many falls, how many repeat walls, how many repeat calls to certain locations that we have had. And it, it does vary year to year, but I mean, there's twenty-six to thirty-five calls per year minimum in the town of Enfield that could be assisted, mitigated, and felt very, very important to me to make that connection, which is
With its lack of practice.
Okay, we're both turning on. We didn't like.
Susan. No, no, I'm asking from you. Sorry. We're managing a mute from online. If everyone online could please remain on mute, we're going to go through the board, do some interaction, do the public present here, and then do the online folks to keep it organized, but remaining on mute makes it so everybody can hear. Go ahead, Alice.
Thank you. Alice Ely, I'm with the Public Health Council of the Upper Valley and also a resident of Enfield as a Thank you. In answer to your question, I, I think whether it's town government or whether it's a particular word in a town. I think one of the most important things about community nursing is the emphasis on the word community. That the community, that the benefit is for people within the community for whom, you know, the healthcare system is part of their care. But as we said, many of these people don't qualify for visiting nurse services. They, their, their situation isn't, is often not as much medical terms of acute care as it is the management of their living situation and their ability to stay in their homes in a stable way. So as we said, the data says when, when circumstances are such that they begin to fall a lot, these things are often things that can be managed without the healthcare system. Quite honestly, the healthcare system can't cope for it. They can't build for it, so they're not going to provide it. But what you're doing is providing a service within your community that I think in many ways is connected to the responsibility of towns under the Town Welfare Officer guidelines. Says we're, we're, we're providing some stability for people in our community so that they can stay in their homes. So they're not providing, you know, a burden on the community in other ways. And, and, and we reflect our own community values in a way to be true to them. And that, so that's why municipal government has a role, because these are our residents and our citizens and our neighbors, and we want them to stay here and be healthy and connected for as long as they are sticking to me.
This is just one with you. And do you have a sense of what the overhead cost would be? I know what's being proposed is a, you know, a contract with Lebanon. It'd still be, you know, general reviews of contracts and reporting. You know, we'd have to have metrics for Enfield to present to like this board and other boards and, you know.
I think it'll be pretty minimal. The, the discussion we've been having is that Emily would stay involved from a ESAC coordinator from the We've talked about, once this gets up and, up and running, that we have probably a board that was selected by the select board to represent the town. So it'd be a little bit of minimal time of me reviewing a contract, I'd say an hour or so, probably. And then a little bit of Emily's time, just watching some of the stats and working with that board. And the rest would be that volunteer board that would be doing a little bit more of the, the data collection, looking at it, making sure things are, our one Enfield was thinking it was going to be. I don't have a dollar figure for you, but I think the cost would be very minimal for the town.
I'm Alice Kennedy. I think I, no.
I think, I, the last time we heard from this program, the last meeting, I didn't understand that the nurses would be so closely intertwined with EMS. And I think that makes a lot of sense because you guys absolutely know who the, I guess, like frequent flyers are for calling 911 or like who's the, who's the most frail members of our community, right? So I think that is, if we can, if we can make that cohesion here in Enfield, then I think it could really My biggest fear is splintering of healthcare resources, overlap and overuse and misuse. And so I just like that the working together sounds great. Then we, I do always keep coming back to the money piece. So just like briefly, I don't know if it was an offhand number, but you had said maybe it would be like $30,000 a year overhead. And your committee had said that you would raise enough for two years. And I guess I don't need to know like all of the nuts and bolts tonight, but just like what infrastructure has to be in place? Like, is that, is this all volunteers? And go ahead.
Zach can speak to that a little bit. We've been working with Chief lately on a contract to provide services. So that $30,000 a year came from that to provide, for his nurses to provide 10 hours a week to the town of Enfield. So there's no, there's nothing that our town needs to do besides, you know, reviewing that contract, entering the contract and, and working with the town of Lebanon to make sure those services are provided. They follow backup with cost on Eric's as well. If we can minimize a few EMS runs a year, I think it'll more than offset any costs that we have in, in an hourly rate of reviewing contracts, some of that work.
Yeah. It, it makes a lot, the way it's represented to, it makes a lot of sense. That's all I have. Doug?
I'm John Claude. Last meeting, I, I thought this was a, an idea worth pursuing, but like Eric, I have some qualms about some aspects of it, I think. On the one hand, it seems to me that we have enough trouble ensuring that our own ambulance service is efficient and effective. And we rely upon the city of Lebanon to provide a significant portion of that service. And I'm wondering, you know, are we ready to take on another responsibility? Or are we just going to say, well, it's really all up to Lebanon? And I, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm like, I think it is indeed a noble idea. But I think I worry that it's going to place more pressures upon our own staffing. And, and not, not the town manager, but the other levels of staff. Thank you.
I'm Tracy Young. My only concerns have nothing to do with the ideals of the program, which are significant and quite superior. My concerns are similar to John's in trying to be careful of the expansion of town resources as we move forward, not immediately necessarily, but over a course of two years. So I'd look forward to very good documentation as to the services provided within the town of Enfield, quantifying the services, et cetera, and looking very carefully at what other resources besides the program itself are needed by the town to support the program as we move forward. Thinking that in the future, there is a distinct possibility that this could become a need that the town needs to provide in, in terms of funding. And I'd want to be very careful of that.
My name is Kate Clumley-Stewart. I think my questions center around the 10-hour component. Because whenever you look at, I'm going to call it part-time work, there's like, 10 hours is a very inflexible number in some ways. It is a real challenge. So I have employed part-time folks over the years. Some weeks you really need them for 50, some weeks you need them for five. So I guess my general question is, how does that 10 hours work flexing week to week? When you have somebody who is a very needy individual or household, and they really need that care. And you add, say, two of those needy households in one week, and then other weeks you might have one. I'm just curious how that goes, what our obligations would be in terms of overtime, whether there's bandwidth to handle it. Because, you know, we have, we do rely heavily on Lebanon, and that's a very important partnership for us. And I don't want there to be any animosity from like, hey, our people needed this and it wasn't there. I want to make sure that when we roll this out, we are able to provide, because people, you go under the microscope when it's a new program, right? So I want people to be successful, I want them to feel good, and I want our relationship to remain very much stable because it's a very important. So I think that's my big question is the 10 hours. I'm comfortable with, with the idea. I, unfortunately, I think government fills in for a lot of social things. I've lived in a country where politics decide they actually cared and took care of people, and that's not this one. So, right, I, it just is what it is. We, if we love and want our people to age in place, we have to accept that the reality is someone has to be responsible for this. Who's the best entity? Well, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure we're capable of taking on at least the fiscal agency, which is how I see this. I see Enfield being a fiscal agent by creating this fund. The contract would cover us. If we get down the road, we don't have the funding, is there going to be some pressure? One to either disband or to fund, absolutely. But I think I'm very comfortable with a fiscal agent. So curious what you have for feedback on the 10-hour component.
Yeah, hi, this is Amanda, the Lebanon nurse. So what we do currently is we technically try to average 20 hours per week over the whole year, basically. And so there are some weeks that you say, okay, well, I worked 16 hours this week, I can work 24 hours next week. But you don't do overtime. Once it kind of hits 10 hours, we're done. And so we are very careful and we take on referrals to say, we can see you now, but we try not to say, we'll see you tomorrow. So I didn't go into that in our number of encounters. But we really try to do like a 24 to 48-hour turnaround time just for any referral. And oftentimes, we'll meet once a week to discuss new referrals and roll out. We try to keep some flexibility, so especially when people that we've been seeing, if they need us, we can respond. We also have boundaries. We have to say, we can only see you for 30 minutes today, that's all I have. And people will understand. I was doing a home visit one day and found out some other people called 911, and I was about five minutes in. I said, I'm really sorry, I have to go. And he was like, that's fine, I know you do it for me, so just go.
That's, that's a really good answer.
And even with each other, like if my plate isn't really full and Amanda's is lighter, like we kind of, you know, work well with each other. So I think it will, I appreciate your concerns and like wanting to keep that relationship going well. But I think it will flow, like fairly well. Even this week with the sick patient I was talking about that was impatient, then Amanda said, hey, you want me to take this other patient, you know? So I think that would just
That's helpful, that helps me make sure that, unless anybody else on the board has more questions that have come up from this portion? Yes, go ahead.
One more quick question. I keep, in the back of my mind, I keep thinking about what the evaluation plan will look like. And I just, I was really excited when you said like about the hours. One of the things I would love to know about is like, if there was an average of 10 hours a week, on average, how many hours were used? Or the converse, like how many requests were declined because there just wasn't enough? Like, do we have it right?
We currently track our referrals and why, if we don't sign someone on, we track the reasons why. Their needs were already met, they declined, decline, or maybe they were deactivated, so we didn't see them for a while, and then they need us to ask for help. So we're already tracking.
Yeah, before we move to public questions, I wanted to bring that up. That's been kind of in the background of what we've been talking about this whole time. You know, the services out there, is there a need? And I think creating this fund, allowing for some fundraising efforts to provide this one to two-year timeframe to, to see what their need really is. And, and to John's point, you know, what, what the workload may really be at this point, but we won't know until we, until we look at what's out there and, and give it a chance.
I'd like to move on to questions and comments from the public in front of us.
Jean Patton. I'm certainly, you know, understand the medical field. I have a daughter who's an RN, a daughter-in-law who's a physician. So I get it about medical needs for patients and community and that sort of thing. Some of my concern is certainly a reflection of what Eric said about, you know, I say the Nurse Association, and I, and I'm still a little concerned about it being connected to the town. My worry is that it will become another financial responsibility for the town. And I know people are already complaining about taxes and expenses and that sort of thing. And so I guess that's my worry in the background. I'm not concerned that, I mean, obviously there is a need, although I also say it doesn't appear that there's been any sort of like study or research about what really are the needs of Enfield. It's sort of like, okay, we're going to develop this great, this fund, and we're going to move forward and we're going to do it. But I just, I, I have some hesitations about it.
I think I knew. I'm going to pick on Erica for a reason, and she's going to tell you why.
President of Enfield and also, actually just leading the role of Director of Home Health at the DNH. There is absolutely a community need. As Kristen said, there are Medicare boundaries that we have to follow that we have to follow within home care that are very strictly regimented. And so if you don't follow that exact guideline, we have to take you off service. And, you know, connecting with your physician and coordinating here unfortunately does not fall within that boundary. So although I would absolutely agree, yes, it would be a great extension of something like the DNH. They just fiscally can't take that law, you know, under the Medicare guidelines. So I think it is a responsibility as, you know, residents of this community that, that this moves forward. Our residents to the depth.
Other questions? Doug?
First, we'll start off as a former 911 call taker, having told the chief and Jeremy where to go. In the dispatch center, we know who is a frequent flyer who has nine, I mean, eight lives. We have no choice but to send them. These people would fill that gap, fill that gap. Secondly, as son-in-law to people from Lebanon who just required a lot of medical service through Alzheimer's and Parkinson's. I wish you'd been available back then, it would have helped our family out enormously. And now I have a 95-year-old father, unfortunately, he's in Franklin, he couldn't use your services. The other day, I took him to the dentist, and his blood pressure was 200 of 100. He was not hitting his level. Now he thinks, well, I can wait until my blood pressure goes up and then I'll take one. I need help there, he's 95 and he's can't care. So I see a lot of value in this program because my hair color says, maybe I'll make these folks something for myself. I'm very much a K public.
Brian Diggler. So I'm just, I'm kind of a hopeless mathematician, that's matter. I don't believe government has the usual responsibility to cover this. I realize it's very complicated. Also, I spent a lot of time in the country where I actually have a residency, and we have a socialized healthcare. But the thing about that is like any other socialized healthcare system, when you have a limited amount of assets, you always have to ration it. So my concern mostly is, so let's say this goes forward, we have two years of money, how do you move like? So we like, you know, this is one of the things I could actually take an infinite amount of money, depending on how it's scoped. And I don't believe that how government, pardon my saying, our job is to, you know, our job is to, to miss, you know, to represent all of us in town. But is it actually your place to be like the nanny state to make sure that these things, which I do not deny, I know, are implemented? Does it always just become serious? So that's my primary concern. So I'd like to say like, okay, two years, fine, get the grants, fine, that's great, private money, great. What happens after that? And if you don't come out, how does that affect the rest of this town? Because as we go, go on through this, there's some people are just getting old, and people are moving to Enfield because of all reasons. There's only housing in the U.S. So we have to look forward, like, what is the five-year plan here? And how, how much is this going to affect everything else as far as the homeowners, the money in Enfield?
And are we looking at a one-year contract?
I believe it would be a one-year contract to start. Look at the second year that came about, and we've continued to look at that.
Hi, Jared of Enfield. I have six years of history of supporting two parents. I have another, last summer, had a 93-year-old friend who had go to the hospital by himself without any family members. And he was released without any family members, when he was like a father to me. And I spent two weeks of my summer trying to support him and call every agency I could to get him services. However, I agree with this gentleman here, despite all of the support that I have given to family members when it comes to responsibility of the town for these types of things. Unfortunately, not every family member has anybody. I was so appalled. I spent so much time with this gentleman, my man, who was like a father to me, who I'd known for 50 years, with his family on the phone, trying to get their you-know-what into his house to help them. So we can't rely on family members today. But my biggest concern really is this is very good, this is very noble. I agree with that on purpose. But what does happen, I think, I see two things happening. I, maybe three. I need to know how many, is 10 hours really enough to start? Are other towns receiving 20 hours? And are we short-sighted by saying, oh, well, Enfield can get by with them? Because I think once we get into this, it's going to be, you built it, they will come. So I think even before two years, we're going to be in a need of more than 10 hours. I also think, what happens in two years? How is there, this is great that there's continued, you know, there's funding now, that's wonderful. And it can help a lot of people for two years, you know? And isn't that better to do something than nothing? But then again, how do we turn our back in two years on what we've done? And, you know, with a 16% tax increase in this town, it's hurting people. I had a good income, I had a good job. That increase is hurting me. The increased water and sewer rates are hurting me. My increased electrical bill is hurting me. And 30% on almost anything I buy for my house is hurting me. So I can't have the town come to me in two years and say, well, this is all noble and good, and we should continue this. And now we're going to, you know, taxpayer money's going to fund this, I'm sorry. So, so I hope you hear, I've been in the trenches, I've seen this stuff. And I'm wholeheartedly supporting people's lives. The only other thing I could say is my friend, you know, it was, he was having an emergency at the time of his life, that it was time, it had been time for many years for him not to live in this house all by himself. It was time ultimately for him to move on and make that big transition to something else in this life. As sad as it was to say, we all wanted to leave this house, but it just really wasn't. So that's my, my piece of, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the folks here in front of us? Go ahead.
I'm Steve Cafflin, and I think this is a wonderful idea. But I am really concerned that the town is going to get involved later. Once we pass something, we can't give it up, and it's going to cost us all a bunch of money that we don't have. And I think the town already has more programs than then they can manage.
Before I move along to the folks online, I'm going to get Doug.
Again, we have an obligation to provide these required home services. Don't we have a moral, competitive obligation to help people here at our center?
I'm going to move to the folks online. The first, I'm going to ask you I'm going to move to the folks online. Uh, the first, I'm going to ask you to unmute one at a time is the one entitled C A. Please unmute and introduce yourself. It says that, that might be you, Celia. Well, that was not how I thought it was going to go. There she is. Popped down the list further. Celia, we're not able to hear. Are you able to hear us? Just put yourself up on mute. I feel like this is the traditional meeting. Somebody has this topic of every time. Give her a second. All right, Celia, we're going to come back to you while you work on that. Let's move on to Lee Davis. Lee, if you'd go ahead and unmute, please.
Do you hear me now? Hi, this is Lee Davis. First time zooming in on a meeting because I thought this was very important. I think services that the elderly are, are needed so much. The 10 hours, um, worries me. I do meals on wheels. I'm in homes every week. Some people don't have phones. They have no relatives. There's just a big need out there for assistance to the, and I consider myself elderly, but I'm lucky, I'm healthy. So I would just like to know if there's going to be a study, uh, when this, if this begins on how the 10 hours are utilized and how the patients are being triaged, like say we have like a, like another episode like COVID. And, and there's so many sick people who can't get out. Who's, how is that going to be triaged by this nursing, um, organization?
Have you haven't, some, uh, something you want to add to that or?
I mean, just that, I mean, that's a great idea. Even we could, um, meet quickly to get that list of who she delivers meals to and um, we obviously were only two people, so we would, um, be open to hearing ideas from the town as we're starting. The city planning to start until January, um, 24. So, um, yeah, that would be.
What do you want?
Oh, you too. We're going to let, Celia, I heard you before. Um, you want to unmute and?
Hit your button. Take your earplugs off. Keep that out.
They're in the same house. Lose my great eye. I saw you, your microphone flash. There you go, Celia. Take your off. We could have an entire episode on television about this. And I'd be like, whose line is that anyways? I'd be like, whose turn is that anyway? Celia, try talking one more time. We heard you before in the middle.
I think we heard it through.
Oh, do you think we heard it through Lee's?
Can she just talk on Lee's?
Yeah, steal Lee's device. Who will not have to be unmuted. Thank you all for your patience, you know. Pretty much things work. All right, while they're working on that, we're going to move on to Dave Bofay. Dave, if you could unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear? This is Celia. Can you hear me? Okay, okay. All right, I'm going to say something. Um, um, first of all, I've had the, I've had the, the opportunity to have the B and A services. And I thought them to be very thorough. And, um, and, um, I didn't see them being stressed out or shortened in time or anything of that nature. Um, it scares me that the town is thinking of taking over healthcare in one area. Uh, of nursing. I don't think Enfield or any town should be getting in the business of healthcare. Um, EMS involvement is another piece that, that worries me. We can't be going to, and spread ourselves so thin in a town that when healthcare is one of the most expensive things, that we're going to go and take on this kind of service when there's opportunity out there. Um, I do know that Medicaid is expanding, um, which is, which is a good thing. And I'd like to see if anything that before Enfield takes on anything like this to establish a committee of the town people to go over this, to look at other towns that have adopted it. See what has happened before they take on this kind of commitment. And that if you could understand me, God love you.
We, we got to hear everything you said twice, but we're good. Thank you.
I'm done.
Did do it twice. Oh, that was new. Um, so Da- Dave Bofay, you were up next. I don't know if you ever got unmuted. And I apologize for everyone who doesn't know me. I'm typically pretty fast-moving, so I'm trying not to see more than anybody and not give them an opportunity. I don't think we're having much luck with the whole new thing today. Uh, is there any, oh, Jo Ellen. Jo Ellen, let's try you.
Okay. Can, uh, Jo Ellen Courtney, and I very much support this issue and I think that it's critical that we do something as, dare I say, as easy as this. Um, I think this is a very important program and I think that we should support it.
Hey, we're giving you a last try. Okay, I'm going to come back. Is anybody from that conversation that was generated, is there anybody here in front of us that wants to ask a question, add something? Becky?
Yes, Becky Powell. And I think would be the best person to answer. People have talked about, well, we need to do a study or get more information. Well, we have all these towns, a number of towns that have been doing this. So there's a lot of data. It seems to me we're not Hanover, we're not Lyme, we're not Norwich, but I would think you could do some comparisons in terms of numbers of residents, average visits. You know, that we have some knowledge about what this might entail.
Yeah, the, the committee has been talking about this for a year and looking at other towns. And you're right, every town is a little different. Um, where Lebanon has 40 hours. So we're kind of looking at, you know, this could probably be about a quarter of what Lebanon has. Um, Hanover has 12 hours, although they, they just increased that or 10 more hours a week, I believe. But most of the towns start at 10 hours a week and really evaluate their program and the needs because each community is very different. And then answer the question.
Uh, I saw that there was a question. Becky, if you want to unmute, uh, we need to take comments out loud for the purpose of the record. So we could go ahead and unmute yourself and ask your question. Not Becky here, Becky online.
Well, you can always send that through the town office as well at any time, obviously. That's what our team is here.
Hello, can you hear me now? Looks like you might be responding. Um, this is, uh, Dave Bofay, retired physician in town. I have some concerns that although the, there is clearly lots of unmet need um, in our community, actually communities, um, not just Enfield. Um, I am concerned, uh, that we haven't heard metrics about what the cost per, uh, service is, um, in other towns, um, that have 10 years of experience. And would like to see some more of that before we are asked to make decisions. Thank you.
We don't collect, we don't know each community's budget. That's really their private information on their own. There's also a significant range in the hourly rate nurses are paid and some communities cover insurance and, and other supplies. So we're trying to get information on, you know, kind of what that that costs, but it's really between 25,000 and 30,000 per year for 10 hours of nursing is, is really what we've looked at of all the communities, not our health.
No, that's, the, the number is set up just exactly what you said in our, our range, our scale when we developed this program. That scale was done by research of other community nursing programs and that's how we came to that, that base scale.
Other questions or comments from the board? That you want to do with the public or you want to deliberate after the hearing is closed? Okay. Questions, comments? This is your last chance before I close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Jean Pat, I have just one more question slash comment in that, and this may be something that Ed would have to answer. So I heard comments about, you know, this nursing would help mitigate calls for EMS and that sort of thing, which is probably true. But my thought is even though it's mitigating calls, my understanding is we still have to pay Lebanon X amount of dollars per year for EMS services. Is that right?
We pay on a per-call basis.
Per-call only?
Yeah.
Okay. And it was $300 a call. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, it's like 385 a call, I believe, somewhere right in that range.
Okay, all right, thank you.
When I made an estimate, it was about $10,000 that could be potentially saved if we can start mitigating the call that we have for calls and repeat calls on an annual basis.
Those are my last call for questions or comments before I close the public hearing. Doug?
My point that I didn't make very eloquently earlier, if the nurses get in touch with the dispatch centers and with them on, they can figure out who are the frequent flyers who do not need an ambulance every time. And these nurses who get referred to them, that would mitigate our cost to offset ambulance calls.
Jean Henshaw, would you please unmute? You're on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, I just want to say that my husband Parker and I support this program 100%. I do feel that community means taking care of each other and 70% of a person's total health picture is outside of the institutional medical care and healthcare setting. It happens in the home. It's about making sure medications are managed. Managed and that houses are, are safe, you know, from fall, for fall prevention and that there's food available, those kinds of things. So, uh, we support this 100%.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Guys, one, one last question.
You're going to get a chance. Unless you want to have it be a general open comment, we're going to do a deliberation when the public hearing closes. Is that acceptable? Yes, no, we? Okay. I know, it's always hard to be fair to everybody and manage these. All right, at this time, um, I'm going to close the public hearing and we're going to see what the pleasure of the board is. Go, Alice.
Well, I want to know of, um, of the towns who have done this for like a longer time, are they still after a number of years, like benevolently funded through like fundraising, or have any of them had to defer the cost back to the town at all?
Kristin can answer that better than I can, but I think it's the first answer is it's funded in a whole bunch of different ways over a whole bunch of different communities. One of the things I wanted to talk about was that when the committee came to me, the first talk was bringing on a town employee to provide this service. And we kind of looked at a whole bunch of different ways. We were looking at working with a nonprofit outside of here to provide the service and actually house the employee under there. And then when Lebanon came forward, we thought this was a, a wonderful opportunity to, to move forward with this. We're coming to the select board to ask for a fund to be able to fundraise with that. But with that, I can, like Kristin.
I agree with what you said, Ed, that there's, each community is a little different in, in how they fund, you know, Hartland, Vermont is 100% a nonprofit, aging in Hartland. Although I have to say, the town now donates to the nursing program. So most of the towns, if it is not a town employee or contract with the town, they have a lot, they've added a line item to donate to the nursing program under research effort to it. That answer question?
I just wanted to highlight, I have three points that I heard as recurring themes that I just wanted to kind of lift up. One was, I've heard repeated different numbers about what a contract term would look like. So I want to be very clear upfront, but I think we have focused tonight as a board and the town on a one-year contract, not three, not five years. A contract is very different than forecasting into the future. So I want to just highlight that. Um, another piece that folks have talked a lot about, um, I summarize as evaluation points. So what are the evaluation points along the way to determine how we're doing and what's working for us? And the third point was a mechanism. Um, I'm going to say mechanism to increase because not many people said 10 hours is going to be too many. So, like anyone said that. So those are just the three points I picked up from listening to everyone that I think would be important points for our board to consider and, and talk about. And I guess we need to figure out what you guys would like to do.
Hey, I can add to that real quick. You know, I think that's why, that's part of the reason we're bringing it forward the way that we are. To start this, the committee said that they would, they would work the bunch. Two years where we're thinking that's about the time we're going to need to truly know what the need of Enfield is and and, I mean, we can do a study, we can go out there, we can talk to people, but we're not going to know the need until we're out there in the field and we see the numbers of who we're actually seeing and who we're not seeing. And so we, we felt this was a great way to, to establish this fund, do some fundraising, put the boots on the ground and see what, what the need is out there in Enfield. And then we'd have a lot better data at that time to determine what we wanted to do after the two years. And there's a lot of different models we could move toward.
So in other words, we're looking at this as sort of a pilot program. We're going to try to figure out how well does this meet the needs of Enfield and how much stress does it put upon the systems of Enfield? And I think we need to be prepared though, if we do this, that after two years, we need to be ready to say it's not going to work for us. You know, something like this will gain a life of its own.
I have a suggestion on that front. One being if we do establish a fund, that we not sign a contract until 100% of the funds needed to pay any contract have been raised. Pay everyone the taxes to, for the next two years. And the second would be that we not move to spending tax money until we go to town meeting. To me, this is a big, a big change in town government. It's worth taking the town meeting as a warrant article if both has a plan to move forward in the town program. And I think it's always good to have things, as a calendar for, for suggesting like that. Year one would be calendar year 24, 2024. Year two would be calendar year 2025. In order to not have a gap, you'd have to be in town meeting in 25, which means you'd have essentially 14 months of data to present a town meeting. Otherwise, if you wait till town meeting 26, you have a gap in funding because that's year three from a funding standpoint. And you wouldn't have any funding for that year unless additional money was raised. So either it'd be town meeting 25 or three years of funding would have to be raised to not have a gap. So that's kind of my suggestion, that we not sign a contract until the So that's kind of my suggestion, that we not sign a contract until the money is in hand. And I guess we can't commit future boards to things, but then we make some sort of a commitment to not make it a town, a general fund, general fund paid expense until it goes to town meetings. That'll be my two suggestions.
I think that's fair. I think the first step is establishing the fund and we've established trust funds like I'll pick on the townhouse, right? Which is not something that enters to the public benefit necessarily in the way healthcare does. That gets money from time to time and ver, through various mechanisms. They spend it as they go. So I think that's a reasonable amount. And we've had a lot of ongoing projects around here that were very people driven, that were for niceties. Again, they, they couldn't go ahead with the project until they had the funding. So I think if this isn't kicking off until 2024, they have ample time to make the first incremental piece of progress. I wouldn't say they need two years of fundraising upfront. I think they need the first year.
I think they need whatever we signed a contract for.
We shouldn't be signing a contract for more than one year. We're not talking.
Yeah, no, no, that's, all, all I'm saying is the money needs to match the contracts. So because if we sign a contract without the money, we're committing to pay for that.
Right now, what we're being asked to do tonight is to establish the fund so that they can do the fundraising. I don't think we're at, we're certainly not at the contract phase yet, although we need to have those conversations.
Right.
Yeah.
But the purpose of the fund would be moving towards.
Moving towards it. I, I do also, I always worry, because I come from a supply chain background, if we should have a letter of understanding stating that we've established the fund, this is our intent. I know it's not a formalized contract, but I hate to dangle the contract out there, especially given our very important relationship with the, and so just thinking about different mechanisms so that we can show that we are serious in our commitment. I know this committee is certainly serious. They've worked on it for a long time. This isn't an idea that came out of Lucky Bunny Ranch. You know, and I, I know a lot of people have time into it. I'm, I'm very comfortable personally allowing the establishment of fund. Again, I just think we allow establishment of funds that are relatively flawless in this town sometimes, that do cost a lot of money to taxpayers, even though they claim they don't. And I, I personally am willing to say, if we got to a point where we found a very uncomfortable truth might be, it's really expensive or it doesn't offset for some reason, then we have that hard conversation and we take it to the voters. I'm not a stranger to hard conversations. And like you said, we can't commit a future, we can't bind a future board, but I think we can say we're willing to have that conversation and do that data tracking, that commitment. And at least some of you will be here for it.
I think Eric's suggestion of a calendar timeline is good. We raise the money from now until the tail end of the year. Some of the year will know whether that first year's budget is in place and we can establish the pilot program at that time.
Yeah, I mean, the exact details would have to be worked out between groups, but I suspect that as they get into those details, Lebanon would probably like a little more advanced warning than the end of December.
Well, as soon as the money is raised on the first year pilot program, then they would know about it.
Correct.
And these guys have told us in the prior meeting, they have letters ready to go, right? Like this is, we're going to start letters later in a couple of months. They're, they're ready to go on fundraising. So we're going to know relatively quickly. People, when they get a fundraising letter, they commit relatively quickly, one way or another. For the purposes of moving discussion forward, I'll make a motion that we establish a community nursing trust fund pursuant to RSA 31:19. This fund shall be a restricted trust fund for the purpose of supporting a community nursing program in Enfield. So that's a motion.
Yeah, can you say it one more time?
Yep, it's, so I made a motion to establish a community nursing trust fund pursuant to RSA 31. This fund shall be a restricted trust fund for the purpose of supporting a community nursing program in Enfield.
But I think we should include some statement that it's funded in private donations, including gifts, legacies and other sources of non municipal funds.
Do restricted trust funds typically have such language? I've never seen one have that.
So the trust fund itself wouldn't normally have that restriction? I mean, that would be a restriction for the program?
Okay. Do we need to make a separate motion for restricting the program? How do we do that?
You can if you would like to. I got the gist, but if you want to make a motion that I not enter into a contract until they're, until it's funded with.
Yeah, we don't need the restrictions on the trust fund then. That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think. Sure, if you depend, decide to fund it a different way, but how we go about entering into a contract for community nursing, we can either do tonight or we can talk about it in the future.
And do you want to name an agent to expend? Name the town manager, you can name the select, but you should have other names.
I think the agent to expend isn't needed until the fund is secured, as Eric suggested.
I would.
But you do, you want to do it when you create the fund, because the trust, trust fund's going to need all the details.
That's true. So I'll amend my motion to name the select orders agents to expend, and that will give you a little bit of an answer.
Can we include any language around after the money has been raised?
No, because. This is about the physical agency and where the money goes for accounting purposes, not the actual project.
Yep.
I will second the chair's motion.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Bye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Sometimes government is laborious to make sure we try to get it right, but we appreciate your time. It is, I know, somebody told me the other day, your meetings are really boring. It's like, they aren't when you're trying to figure it out in your head. So I think let's, if you're comfortable with it, I think we should have the discussion on the contract pieces at another time because I feel like that is going to be pretty substantial. Is that a, something that you guys are okay with?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I can work with chief.
Thanks very much, everyone.
Thank you much.
Appreciate your coming.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Should we start the process before me? Is there any?
I don't think.
I'm going to record now for the fundraising purpose. Let's see if we raise the money.
Yeah. They're ready to go.
They're ready to go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For ourselves mentally, with the match items that we, you know what I mean? Something that keep up.
So what I'm suggesting, for either contract, so they, they're saying they'll raise money. So these years will be paid. I'm suggesting that we not use any tax money.
I guess folks with a minute to.
It's not, we recently raised two years of money.
Sort themselves out in the past year.
What I'm suggesting is, one way is if you just keep going, like, or a different way.
Thank you, Elisa.
Right. Absolutely. Not for any positions now. Okay.
All right, I'm going to give you all 30 seconds to wrap up side conversation.
No problem.
Yeah.
So we can get to the business of the evening.
Right, so that's, that's where one of your arguments is.
Okay, guys, side conversations. We're going to, no, we're going to go back to the business of the evening, but we are definitely going to be revisiting these pieces and, and certainly folks can have a conversation. I want to move on to approval of the minutes. You have the minutes of May 15th in your pocket.
I read them. As usual, they, they seem very, very good and I would move that we approve them as presented.
Okay, we have a second.
A second.
Do we have any questions, comments or corrections? I've seen none. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Bye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously? Town managers, I'm sorry, board reports, boy, I'm really trying to skip. Let's, yeah, look at me go. Eric, we'll start with you.
In an attempt to be brief, so the exciting news is the grant proposal from the planning board for, I forget the exact dollar amount, but for money for rewriting the zoning was granted, so we will have a zoning rewrite effort over the next 14 months.
Excellent.
My question on that, does that relieve any of the budgeted money that we have placed for the second phase?
No, because the second, that's for additional chapters to the master plan. This is the right zoning, rewrite zoning, which we then go to town meeting.
Yeah.
So it's a separate, separate effort.
Yeah, but we'll be coordinating with the master plan.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's driving, the master plan is driving.
Exactly.
What it is, but it's a separate effort.
Okay.
Just, just very briefly, how do you foresee that, that process of, of revising zoning to work? I know it, it ends up at town meeting.
But no, so, so they're going to hire someone to support it, you know, an exterior support for writing it? And I think a lot of it's going to be relatively new because the town, the master plan was fairly different from the previous town.
So the zoning is going to come from the master plan?
Right.
Essentially coming from the committee?
Correct. Right. And they're, it's sort of the next level down.
Yeah.
As these things flow through. But so then they're taking the master plan and now they're going to try to rewrite zoning to match what people have said they want.
Excellent.
Other reports?
He needs to make a motion. He says make a motion.
No, let's wait until, let's wait until we get to, yeah, we're on. So we're going to go on to Alice.
Um, I could not attend the heritage commission meeting with my public conflict. Eva had their monthly business coffee at Vanessa Stone Real Estate that was well attended and they're continuing to get ready for the Shaker Seven Race June 4.
Don?
Uh, nothing to report. Waiting for the budget committee to start meeting.
It's coming. We're always budgeting. Tracy?
Um, nothing from the energy committee, and I think, Ed, you're probably going to touch on that other award and, and I don't mean those other results anyway, I zoomed.
A little bit.
So I won't delve into that.
Great. I attended the conservation commission meeting last Thursday. Sad to report, it was a little bit challenging. We continue to have some issues understanding basic procedures, which we are working through. I have, Ed has been very generous in taking in lots of emails where I redirect people back to him. So thank you, Anna Lisa. They are working very hard on developing a volunteer trail crew. There's some insurance things obviously that we have to tackle, some recruiting pieces. They're also working on adding a three cone of square master. It's something we as a board had discussed in the past. I suggested they consider having that conversation with the board since it would be a position. I, I don't know if they're going to take us up, me up on that suggestion, but hopefully he will talk to you. We had a complaint in his individual capacity. Roy Holland came before the conservation commission with a concern about the chair representing. I'm not really sure what the truth is in the end, and I'm not saying Mr. Holland was the issue. I am not sure what actually went down or what went wrong, but there was somewhere along the lines of a complaint to DES. From what I can understand, that the email was in writing, I have not seen a complaint formalized, but about his property. There was a discussion on whether it was appropriate to make such a complaint and what it would be about, and it was a concern about cutting trees. It was not over 10,000 board feet, so there's no intent to tie. So just some concerns about ongoing propriety of how that commission is investing itself, unfortunately. So continuing to work through that, having, trying to help them understand. Doug has unfortunately resigned, but he has seen front row seat to some of these, just to kind of, kind of give people the educational pieces and tools so that they know who to go back to before maybe they do some of these activities that might be questionable. So you will probably see a formalized complaint that come before the board of select in that regard. That's all I have. Town managers report?
All right. We've been extremely busy. Staff report. Enfield Police Department continues to work through the hiring process. We did test an applicant or two applicants the last couple of weeks. One of them is still in the, in the funnel to possibly be hired. As I've talked to you before, this is a very competitive market and we're seeing the towns around us continually increase their bonuses for certified officers and non-certified officers. So it's getting more competitive. The one applicant we do have in the funnel has multiple applications out and we've decided which, which department he wants to go to. So we'll, we'll see where that ends up. As I told you before, with some of the money left over from staffing, I've worked with Chief Holland to be able, we're not offering a, a definite monetary bonus, but we are telling people that we're willing to negotiate when they're, when they're willing to talk about coming on and we'll, we'll negotiate a possible bonus along with vacation time and all those other things that goes along with hiring someone. So we're, we're continuing to look at that. All other positions within the town are currently stacked. Quick update on public safety building in Whitney Hall project. M-Fact toured Whitney Hall with Brett Love and will be releasing design build RFPs and M-E-P-F in the near future. Brett Love's doing it a little bit different than the Glenn Chase is. They're putting out design build RFPs for those mechanical systems to see what comes back from the others. We are giving them some guidance on what we're looking for, including. Can't think. E-pumps and on-demand water heating systems to stay as close to the select board's goal as, to net zero as possible within the budget that we're allocated. We're also in the, we're also close to entering the RFP process on the public safety building for M-E-P-F and plan to start this, the public safety project in the spring. And back to Whitney Hall, we're still kind of on course, looking at the fall/winter timeframe to start the Whitney Hall project, but a lot of that'll, a lot of that will hinge on what comes back from these RFPs. Community power. As Tracy said, we had some, some big stuff happening. I think the big news is that we've fully made the switch now. Everybody's been moved over and we're now working off of community power of New Hampshire's electricity. I would like to thank Joellen Courtney, Kim Cork, the Energy Committee and all of the residents of Enfield that helped make this a reality. I'd also like to help all those volunteers from across the state. I know Mr. Vila was, he was a big part of this and from Lebanon, and then I know Nashua, Hanover and a whole bunch of other communities have people that were very involved in making this happen. I would like to take a minute to turn this over to Joellen Courtney. She's online today and she can give you a, a little bit of an update on, on where we're at with that. Joellen?
Hello. Hi. Yes, so we started with community power when the meters were read in early May. And as you know, your bill that you receive is always for the month earlier. We've been still getting a lot of calls or not really calls, but emails about people not understanding when it starts. And all of the Liberty customers within Enfield have been put on community power. However, there was a delay with the Eversource customers in Eastman. They will be put on the next cycle and that delay was due to Eversource's difficulty with some coding. There is still no resolution with solar customers. They're still working on that. And we do have news that the coalition has hired a new CEO, Brian Kalnan, who was formerly a vice president at New Hampshire Electric Co-op, and he started two weeks ago. So we're excited, things are moving. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
That'll move on.
Throw a number at it though. The number is fantastic.
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, the, the program is projected through July to save $411,000 to the community of Enfield. That's just through July. That's tremendous.
Yeah.
Very impressive sums for that committee.
Thank you. So I'm going to, you guys don't have my report, but I'm going to skip a little and So I'm gonna, you guys don't have my report, but I'm gonna skip a little and come back, I was gonna go through grants, but I wanna finish with our grant update, because it's quite extensive. So I'm gonna jump down to some DPW projects that are going on, um, the water project on Maple Street is going pretty well, we've had our, our ups and downs with it, but LMM Construction was able to pressurize the water line, the main water line they put in from Route Four to the coronator shed, happy to report it held pressure, so, um, that's, that's good, a lot of times in those water mains you chase a, a leak or two, and so we were able to pressurize that, they're continuing moving up what would now be Moose Mountain Road with some of the main line, and they're getting ready to start putting in service lines, so, so that project's moving forward pretty well. Um, the CCTV inspection of sewer mains is about seventy-five percent complete, I think last time I talked to you, we were about halfway done, we have slowed down a little bit, because they're doing the Route Four corridor, and it's a little harder to coordinate with flaggers and different things, but we're hopeful that that, that gets completed soon, and then we'll move on to the, to the phase where we're planning the projects to, to fix the problems that we did find. Oak Hill Road Bridge construction should start next week, we're, we're expecting it to start next week, and it'll, it'll take approximately three to four weeks while that bridge is out for replacement. Um, I wanna thank our, our DPW crew, they've been doing in-house CDL training, I don't know how much we've talked to you about that, but the state switched the way they were doing CDL training, and now people have to go to a class, we had some people in-house get certified and, and be able to teach that class, we now have nine members that have either got their CDL or increased their CDL through our schooling in-house. If they were to go to get their CDL, the cost of that for a school is approximately five to seven thousand dollars, so not only is there a pretty good savings to the town, but I believe that some of the people that increased their CDL probably would not have been able to attend class, so we now have a better qualified DPW, and we're saving the town money, so I'd like to, to thank those in DPW that organized that in-house training and take the time to teach those classes.
Absolutely, it's outstanding.
Um, with that, um, getting on the water project, we're getting ready to drill our second test well near the marsh well, um, looking for a, a little bit better source to expand the municipal water system, so we'll, we'll keep you up to date as we, as we drill that well and, and see how much water we have there. Um, if you have a chance, look at the shed that their DPW is building out back here up on the upper level, um, they had brought a similar shed, an expansion of the one they have out here to the CIP committee, there was some debate and discussion about that, I am happy to announce that they are building this shed with mostly repurposed materials, it looks like the overall cost when we're done is gonna be somewhere in the five thousand dollar range when they get done, so, another good job of them looking around, seeing what we had laying around, and being able to put those, those other materials to use. Um, it'll be good when we, um, remove the Shed Street buildings, which I'm hoping to do later this summer, early fall, that they'll have a place to, to put some of their equipment through the winter.
Oh, we're collecting things at Shed Street again, it looks like.
It has been used ever since.
I mean, it's like, we get told it's empty, it gets empty, then we collect more stuff.
It was empty like three years.
It's, oh yeah, it was empty.
They continue to do that, and they've always used it in the winter for.
Put snap caps on it.
Will we salvage the red garage that's there, the small garage?
We'll be, no, we'll be using bits and pieces, but there's, there's lead paint on that and different things that we'll be getting rid of, so. I do think they were looking at stealing some roofing and some things from over there for their shed, but I don't know if they will, or they were looking at other, other ways to, to find cheaper roofing materials, but most of that will just go away. So with that, I'm gonna move on to the grant updates and give you just an idea of what we've been working on for the past few months, um, a lot of this was Chief Holland, but a lot of other people have stepped in as well. The congressional direct spending that you guys approved, we're still in the running for the five hundred thousand dollars of congressional direct spending for energy improvements, heat pumps, solar panels, and polar, solar walls for the public safety building, um, we plan on knowing more about this in August, that's usually when they announce if you're gonna get funding or not, but it's, it's good news that we're still in the running, and we're, our grants down in Washington DC, getting, getting kicked around a little bit. Um, Kim, Kim Cork brought to us last week an EECBG grant for energy efficiency upgrades. Um, doing some research, Chief Holland found that this is not applicable for new building projects, but we did, um, look at it, we worked with Brett Love, and we applied today for six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars worth of money for the renovation of Whitney Hall for insulation, heat pumps, and window upgrades, so we.
Which department does that go to?
That'll go to the Whitney Hall project.
No, no, I meant, which government department is that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but, um, so we're, we're hopeful on that, and we'll see what happens, that was a pre-application, if that gets scored well, it'll come back for a, a full approval for application, and will come before the select board. Um, the hazard mitigation grant, Chief Holland's been working with the Bureau of Homeland Security on a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant for the generator and other materials to build the emergency operations center, which is a portion of the public safety building, this grant's not been awarded, but it's, it's really close, it's almost, almost a give-me grant, so we're continuing to work on that. Um, as we will talk tonight, we have been awarded the HOP grant, I'd like to thank David Frack and Rob Taylor for writing the HOP grant that's been awarded for the zoning in an amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. I have put forward an L-CHIP pre-application of five hundred thousand dollars for the Whitney Hall building, this would be used on, um, upgrades of the exterior, historic renovation, I'm working with Brett Love right now on exact pricing and how much work needs to be done on the exterior, and whether or not we want to apply for the final grant, that one's still kind of on the bubble, there's a lot of red tape that comes with an L-CHIP grant, and we're right in that spot, is it worth it, is it not, but I did put in the pre-application for that. Um, Chief Holland applied for forty-four thousand dollars on the USDA grant for items to outfit the new public safety building, we're still awaiting whether or not we receive that grant. I have worked with the Mascoma Lake Association and the City of Lebanon, um, this last week, we applied for the New Hampshire DE, to the New Hampshire DES, for a hundred thousand dollar grant for watershed protection planning. Um, after many discussions, um, we applied as the City of Lebanon, being the fiduciary, I wrote the grant and worked with Martha Rich and Jim Martel, providing details for that grant, they have been leading the charge. So, it, it was a really nice team effort, working with the City of Lebanon for that, we did that just to add a little bit of flexibility, there's some approvals and things that would, they would have had to go through our town meeting, with the town taking out a loan for a hundred thousand dollars and getting reimbursed, with the City of Lebanon being the fiduciary, we can work with DES and the city, and it just needs to go through the city council, so it's a little bit more flexible, they'd be the fiduciary, it's a hundred thousand dollar loan with a hundred thousand dollars worth of forgiveness, so. Um, I am happy to announce, and you may remember a few years ago, that there was a storm that caused damage to Potato Road, um, because of undersized culverts, the town applied for a hazard mitigation grant, and we have now completed all the paperwork and are expecting a reimbursement of fifty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents, which is seventy-five percent of the overall cost, the town's twenty-five thousand dollar match was done with time and town materials working on the, on the roof, so, no actual cost out of our budget, but a little bit of DPW time and materials, and, um, I'd like to, to thank the emergency services team that worked on that, especially Jim Taylor, who stayed on top of the US Army Corps of Engineers, that was a lot of work getting some extra permits to, to make that happen. Um, and then, not really a town grant, but I am happy to announce that I just found out that the NTIA is working with the Grafton County Broadband Middle Mile Project, and they're, they have, um, approved, working with fun, working funding through their grant program to build the, the county middle mile project, we do need to make a, a few changes to that and, and find some, I don't wanna say find some money, we need to find a bank to help back us up, um, Mascoma Bank was backing us up, but they have some really strict standards on that, and Mascoma Bank is slightly slid outside of their standards, so we'll be, we'll be working to find another bank to work with and team up and making some changes to that, so I've been honored to be a part of that committee and increase broadband coverage across Grafton County, and that's the grant work we've been working.
That's a lot, questions or comments from the board?
No, the only minor one that you're aware of is the hundred thousand dollar grant that just went to the SAU thirty-two to provide the funding for a, uh, energy manager, uh, training and hiring purposes, and that will certainly affect not the town necessarily, but one of the assets of the town, which is the village school.
What's the county middle mile project?
It's, it's bringing what they call a middle mile, or we like to refer to it like the interstate of broadband, that will go to every single town in Grafton County, and from there, we're about to release, we've worked with our engineers as well, to provide kind of that last mile, what it would look like on the ground to bring, um, fiber internet to every single resident of Grafton Town. It's a, I forgot how much, twenty-eight million dollar project, it's a, it's a big project.
We were an early, um, entrant into broadband, um, years ago with Fast Roads, um, and our town manager at the time was involved in that, and that's how we got fiber into Infield along with some neighboring towns, one of the goals was to also make it so other towns could connect, but they, with licensing and everything, they didn't get as much done as they proposed, which is not abnormal for projects, but still disappointing for you. So there are still many folks who don't have that kind of middle tier, right, because you have your primary bands, your secondary band, and your tertiary band, which is your homeowner band, basically, and so it's getting that secondary piece in place so that a homeowner or business that's more remote could help out.
Yeah, it'll be a main line, ours may be one of the sections we're working on because of the Fast Roads project, but it would be like a main line that went down Route Four, and then a hub sixty-six, or somebody would be able to come off of that and provide the actual residential roads that go out to people's homes.
If you wanna see what we have right now, I'm pretty sure it's, I, I think the Fast Roads map is still up online, I haven't looked for quite a while, but you can kind of see where they went, so it's interesting, because what it tells you is there's a lot that really isn't covered, and, uh, fiber is very, very different than, as you know, cable, and I don't know, what's that other thing called with the telephone? You know, it's the thing that like is really slow.
DSL.
DSL, that's it, and it, you know, drops packets, so, um, it's definitely worthwhile, and it makes Infield a lot more viable as a telecommuting home.
It'll help us some, it's a lot more beneficial to the, I'm gonna say smaller towns, but I know Kane is one that does not have a lot of broadband, and it'll help them, we do have some areas of town that, that definitely could use some upgrading, and it'll be helpful there.
Anybody else got any questions, comments on the town manager's report? Okay, let's move on, you're on the town manager's report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, first recommendation is, can you restrict the high back chairs to the back wall?
That's not a town manager's report.
I understand that.
Okay, we're moving along, town manager.
Uh, I'd like, again, I don't know if this, this falls in, but I'd like to get an amendment or change the May first.
Okay, town manager's report.
Of my conversation.
We're gonna focus on the town manager, you can wait till public comment if it's not true. Okay, so, nothing on the town manager's report, moving on to communications, liquor commission notification of application for combination beverage, wine, tobacco license, uh, it says DBA, Proctor's Country Store, an opportunity to submit comments, you have the letter, found the liquor commission in your pocket? Can I be really honest and tell you, I don't, I'm like, they have a license.
Yeah, they changed it on here.
No, I missed that one, okay.
No, I didn't know that either, and so I was asking what they were talking about, like if someone knew, and every time somebody on, somebody new on somewhere, they have to offer a new license, I learned a lot today, as per usual.
I just missed that, so, okay.
So no action needed unless you guys wanna provide comments?
No, we're probably not gonna tell you where we buy liquor. Moving along, um, cemetery trustee resignation, you have a resignation from Neil Miyager in your packet, um, Neil has moved to human, so I'd entertain a motion to accept the resignation with regrets.
Uh, moved to accept the resignation of Neil Miyager with gratitude and regrets. Second.
Uh, any questions or discussion?
Just a quick question, and I'm sure it's a simple answer, I assume that you have to be a resident of Infield to be a cemetery trustee.
You do.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
I opposed, sentence passes unanimously, so this means get out your thinking hats, and we need a new cemetery trustee, I would tell you, they're, they're the most fun committee in town, and I'm not kidding you, they're actually, it's a pretty neat committee, so, for somebody who would be a good entrant for something that's not a heavy lift, that's not a ton of meetings, that would be a great way to get someone started. Let's go down to business of the evening, we have Chuck Courier from Montcom Golf Club, Chuck, if you'd approach the table, please?
Sure. Good evening, first off, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight, um, my name is Chuck Courier, I own, I'm the sole owner of Infield Land Company, Infield Land Company is the owner of property known as Montcom Golf Club, and we have, I believe it's, uh, four different, part one, two, three, four different parcels on the tax map, I come before you tonight because of a fee that's attached to our taxes for the December tax, this is the fifth year that I've owned Montcom Golf Club, and I have paid my taxes on time or in advance every single time. What happened in the December tax is, to preface this, is that I do not live here during the winter, I live in the Florida Keys, and I have an administrative assistant in my, up here, and I have an accountant that we use remotely from Georgia, and in March, I was going through our stuff in the computer and the, the company stuff, and I called my administrative assistant, a young lady named Taylor Nallett, I said, Taylor, I don't see, I put the money in in December to make sure the fifty thousand dollars was there for the taxes, I don't see the taxes being paid, she goes, well, we never got a tax bill, I said, you need to call the town of Infield today, find out what it is, I will overnight a check to them today, she did. Um, it was forty-eight, uh, the amount was.
Forty-eight.
The amount was, uh, forty-four thousand six hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Um, according to this. So, I overnighted a check to them, and I did it so that I could track the check, and I, it was two day, because you can't get overnight out of the Keys into Infield, New Hampshire, they won't guarantee it, but they'll guarantee two days, two days it landed at Infield's police, I mean, Infield's post office, it took the Infield post office nine days to deliver the check to you. Now, I've had horror stories of mail in Infield over the winter, Jay Bushy wants to find electric, he said, you could use my name, he said, I'm telling you, I went months without getting checks, I talked to Julie Huntley in the office about that when I first got here, and she said, hey, we've had stuff in town, people have lived here thirty, forty years, and the post office returned it, no, no, no address.
Yeah.
I mean, Jay, December, January, and February, got three mail deliveries, you hear horror stories about people coming up, so, that being said, um, I'm, I'm, I gotta, I gotta spout here a little bit, um, and is that, I'm the largest taxpayer in the town of Infield, and I always paid my taxes on time, and, um, yeah, I don't put any children into the school system, you don't pick up my garbage, the only thing you do is you maintain a hundred feet of Smith Pond Road to get to my driveway, my entrance, so, I'm, I'm not a big burden to the town, but yet I'm the highest taxpayer, so, um, there's one other thing I wanna throw out, which, which to me it counts, but it may not count in this discussion, is that back in two thousand nineteen, when I first bought Montcom, um, I was going to put in a cart barn for electric carts, and I came to the town, I had it all designed, I came to the town, they charged me about nine hundred dollars for a building permit, we never built the thing, so, you know, I went, the next spring. So, you know, I went, the next spring, I went to Julie and I said, how about getting my money back for the, I I never built the thing. What about my nine hundred dollars for my billing permit? She goes, oh, it's too late, can't get it back. Happened last year, can't get it this year. So I didn't pursue that, but what I'm asking the town is, I think the town, I think currently, right now. That bill. Is nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and ninety nine cents late fee. So, um. I guess I'm coming before the board to ask you to. What your thoughts are. I don't think I should have to pay that. I mean, it's.
Well, I'll venture my opinion. It's a lot of money, certainly. However, there are people who have much less money than you do, sir. Much less property than you do, and they get late fees and they have to pay them. That's just the way it is. So I I'm totally against mitigating this.
Other members of the board?
No, I agree with John. I think this is, it's a fairly typical story of of how somebody pays their taxes late and. You know, I mean, I had a similar experience once where there was some mistake and I ended up paying a late fee. And it was not anybody's particular fault, but that's, it works. And, you know, we need to have late fees in order to motivate people to pay on time.
I don't need to motivate, all due respect, I don't need a motivation to pay on time. This is circumstances that will be out of my control.
Yeah, I think you, what, we can't do anything about how you manage your staff or your company, and I don't want to get into that portion. Our obligation is to the public that lives in this town to treat everybody fairly and equally. And so if we give you an exception, then we have to give everybody else one. I think that's the real challenge here, so like. I went to pay my tax bill one night and my kid was being a holy terror, and some of these guys have seen her in meetings, then we did Zoom throwing things. I missed it. I paid the late fee, right? I didn't tell anybody I had a terrible parenting evening until tonight. I just paid the bill, and I think. We have people who are literally starving, who still pay their late fees. So I just really struggle with the idea, because if you don't pay the late fee, then it, this goes back on the rest of the town, so, right? Even if pennies here and there, we're still taking from others as we do this. So you aren't the largest taxpayer in town, even though you feel like you are. There are many folks and many other corporations in aggregate that pay more than you do, so it's not about who's the biggest, it's about being unilaterally fair to everybody without favors of them.
Then why don't we suggest you, I'll pay the late fee from that day you got my check. Because I want to come in front of you and you're still charging me late fees today. It went up yesterday, goes every day goes up. And I want to have the opportunity to come here. I'll pay the late fee from the day you got my check.
I would be fine with abating it to the day we got the check.
That was eight hundred and some dollars.
I I'm not fine with that otherwise, because we have an online portal, we have a telephone, we have, you know. You know, these are regular expenses that you know as part of your budget you're going to be incurring.
When did we receive the request for this? For the abatement?
We don't know. Exactly. I don't know the exact date off, and it was a few weeks ago.
I'd suggest that as the date of pause.
That's when you, was that when, no, that wasn't when you did.
I'd be able to check up back in April before I came north.
I, I, we have all been tortured by the mail. I, I mean, I haven't seen mail at a couple of locations that I deal with in weeks, other than to get returned things. To people I know who have boxes. I, I think that issue is a separate issue we need to set aside. That's a complaint to the postal inspector. You need to file separately. It's not a town issue. So I would be willing to do the date we received the check and, well, I guess the abatement request.
Yes, I think the abatement request. I'd live with that.
Do you want that as a motion?
You can do, yeah, I'll need a motion of some kind, if you're going to abate anything.
Yeah. Who wants to take a stab at a motion?
I move that we.
What's the difference between the date? What dates are we looking at?
There's about two weeks of interest on interest.
So there's three dates. There's today, the day we got the check and the day we received the request. Those are three different dates?
Oh, there's a fourth date, the day it was actually due.
So is there any way of knowing what we're agreeing to?
Yeah, we, we know what day.
I don't know a monetary amount and I can't pull that.
But we'll be able to see the communication date.
There will be, there'll be a formal communication where the abatement was requested.
Yeah.
And I'm suggesting that that would be the day that would pause the late fees and that we would. Basically, evade the fees from that day until now.
That's the motion.
That's the. I think it's going to be in that eight hundred dollar range. I think that's what he was talking about.
Okay, so you, are you willing to make that?
Yeah, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion, clarification points, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Absentions passes unanimously. Okay, and they will get you the amount.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, plowing of private roads discussion.
Jim Taylor should be online since.
He's been hanging out with us for a while. Thanks, Jim, for your patience.
Um, in your packet.
Hello, hello.
Hey, Jim, could you explain to us where these roads are as you're going through them?
Oh, hey, we have this fun new map of just calling your attention to it, so we could point to them naturally.
I'll talk a little bit about my letter. I don't, was it the last meeting? It was one of our last meetings. We had a discussion about, about some of the private roads that were being maintained in town and. That these discussions had had before, so I talked with Jim. He brought forward a list. There was a couple more on here that are a lot more complex than these. We'll continue looking at, but these were the.
Okay.
The three private drives that look very easy that, you know, we've been plowing them. We don't do any summer agents on them. And we want to, we want to bring that forward. So talking with Jim, I decided to go ahead and have a discussion with the town attorney, just to make sure with, you know, the length of time it's been done. Is there anything that the town should be thinking of? And as you see in italicized, there's his, his answer back, which pretty much just said we should not be plowing town roads, and we should not be using any tactics.
Well, non-town.
Non-town.
Non-town, though.
Yeah.
So with that, I just wanted to bring these forward, give you a chance to have discussion with Jim Taylor, talk about these roads and. I guess hopefully make some sort of decision moving forward, what we're gonna do.
And there are a couple of others that are still in the pipeline, if you will, for further review?
Yeah, we'll look at those. They're a lot more complex and different. There's, there's one that's. Pretty much a state road that's part of Main Street that we need to plow, and there's a little portion that's private that we plow for. I'm going to say for our benefit, because we have to turn around and. So there's, there's a few of those that we're, me and Jim will continue to look at, but this is, this is actually the majority of the list, so.
Does this, uh, did you hear something from Kurt? In the last minutes, he was mentioned that he didn't get back to you?
No, but I contacted Jim and got the list.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just know that Kurt was requested to answer what he complained about, and I didn't know if he had the opportunity to do so.
He had not.
This has been a concern that's been raised often on over the years. John probably has more history than I do, I've certainly heard it before. It's sometimes these smaller projects. Don't go with this ass, but I'm personally fine with eliminating time these three roads. And they are, for the record, out loud, Arnold Drive, Bryant Lane, Abir Road. And we can look at them on the map if anybody wants a little bit of a, an idea.
Jim can explain them more if you'd like.
Yeah, so the, um, the first one is Arnold Drive, and that is a little, um. Little road that is just beyond the, the Bog Road, the first Bog Road bridge off of four A. It goes off to the right. Um, there used to be a mill out there years ago, and there's a mill house that that has just recently been foreclosed on and it's changing hands. And there's one, um, a, a, a second dwelling that's at the end of it, which actually has its frontage on Bog Road. And so this one was owned by the folks, the, the, the mill house piece was a storage building that was owned by the people that ran the Gem Star. On, on Shaker Boulevard, and they have recently passed and the property was rented for a year or two. And is, is now in the process of changing hands. That one's probably the lowest hanging fruit, because when both of those properties on that road were in with realtors to kind of go over. The town maintenance responsibility, they, they both got the message from me and from others that. Yeah, that's, that's a road that we've been plowing for many years, but, but we really have no business plowing, so. I, I think the people there are sort of maybe expecting that we're going to stop at some point. The second one is Abir Road, which is roughly across from Hackett Road. It's off of Route four A. It has a little bridge that crosses the Knox River. It used to be owned by one of the Chases. That one has recently changed hands as well. And then the third one is Bryant Lane, which is off of Jones Hill Road. Don Wyman lives at the end of that. I heard sort of anecdotal. Evidence that the reason we started plowing that was that there was a game warden there named Dick Bryant years and years ago. And when the, you know, town road agent thought it was important that, that that road, that that access got plowed, so that if he needed to go out, get out and do something, that, that it got done, so. It, um, you know, been on the town route for many, many years and, and, um. Again, it's a strictly private drive, and I think there's two dwellings on that total.
What are your thoughts? You want to go straight to a motion?
Yeah, let's go right through.
Who wants to make it? I'll even hand you the paper.
I'll make a motion.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to. Okay, to read it first, but I'll make a motion to direct the town manager, they're designated, discontinue plowing or performing any maintenance on Arnold Drive, Bryant Lane, Abir Road. And to communicate this decision with all landowners along the previously plowed portions of the roads in a timely manner.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, absentions passes unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, down to solid waste contract discussion. You have a memo from Ed in your packet. This is one of everyone's favorite topics. Go ahead and see it off then.
So this is a little bigger discussion. As you know, our Casella contract comes due, it actually comes due at the end of June, so we've been. We've been looking at data going back and forth, and we had a little discussion about this last meeting. And Jim had put some numbers together for you. I kind of summarized them on the front sheet. I think the big thing to look at is that, um. Since two thousand ten, our solid wastes has increased by two hundred and four tons or eleven percent. During that same time, our total cost increased ninety four thousand, three hundred ninety nine dollars or twenty percent. Which is approximately one point five percent a year. Cost per household per month has increased three dollars and ninety cents or about nineteen percent, again, approximately one point five percent a year. After looking at that, I knew inflation had gone up more than that, so I did a little bit of research. And the inflation rate during that time is in two point five seven percent since two thousand ten to today. So the total price increase just off inflation should have been thirty nine thousand one twelve cents. So what I'm saying there is not that solid waste isn't expensive and something we should look at, but since we approved this to begin with. Relative costs have actually decreased a little bit on that side. Um, I also put some charts in your. In your packet, if you look at those, that, that shows kind of what other towns do. This is a very hard. Hard of service to be made to compare apples to apples, because everybody does it a little bit differently. But we, we tried to grab some numbers and put those together and then give you some recommendations moving forward. In our current Casella contract, it does offer the possibility. Contract for another five years, so that's something that, that we can look at and. After doing this research, Jim Taylor and myself both think that that's a, that's a good idea to go ahead and move that forward and extend that contract. Jim can give you an explanation of what Plainfield went through about a year ago, but. What we've been seeing around the area is that there's a, a little bit of interest in possibly responding to an R F Q, and then when you put the R F Q out. There's either no companies close to us that have the bandwidth to provide the service that we're asking for. And the companies that do have that bandwidth are from Concord and a little bit farther away, and it just doesn't make financial sense for them to drive all the way up here to do that. So if we're going to continue providing curbside service and transfer station service, I would recommend we extend that contract. One thing that we can do, and it's in our, in some recommendations and things to consider. Is a few of the other towns that provide a similar service. They do have a pay as you throw program. Talking with Jim, we think that would be very difficult to do the way we do curbside, but it is something we could implement at the transfer station if we wanted to, to, to minimize use of the transfer. Encourage people to use the curbside. Um, we could eliminate multifamily commercial buildings from that. Or allow one can per, or one can of each type per parcel. Which would eliminate, I'm sure you've seen the multifamily residences around town with six or eight different trash cans in front of them. That would more encourage them to go get a dumpster that they put somewhere on their property, instead of the town working with Casella to provide that many dumpsters or trash cans. And the other thing we could do is increase fees for the extra items at the transfer station, bringing in a little bit more revenue to offset costs.
There is somewhere, I thought, in our regulations, a ruling that. If, if an apartment building has more than, I forget, it's three or four dwelling units. They can't use quotas. They have to use a.
Dumpster.
Dumpster. Jim, do you remember that?
Yeah, I think that's correct, and I think it's five or more is, is the number in there, but I'd have to double check that.
We've been extended.
Five, that's like when review.
And another distinction between four and five is at four, you're still a primary residence, if somebody's looking to get a primary residence mortgage. So a lot of the four unit buildings are still primary residences, so not all, but many, whereas if you're at five units, you are a commercial property.
No.
One where, even if you live in it, it's a commercial property, right?
When you say extension, you're saying at the same rate?
Well, it'll, there's a, there's an increase multiplier in it, so it'll continue to go up.
Within the next twelve months, does it fit within the budget as we passed it?
We did budget for that and we would, you know, I wouldn't look for a decision tonight if we were going to do that. One of the things me and Jim talked about today was if it's. If that looked like something the select board wanted to do, we wanted to be able to sit down with Casella and have that discussion and come back.
Yeah, we did, we did speak with Casella a little while ago, just in passing, and pretty much the only thing they were really concerned about changing was the, the zero sort would be quite a bit more. And we did put that in the budget, and that was the reason we had approached them was. I'd heard other towns, the, the zero sort piece had gone, you know, quite a bit, like almost doubled, and, and I expect that they will be asking us for that, you know? But again, we, we did cover for six months at a higher rate in the budget this year.
So what kind of program would we be looking for?
So if we do the extension, we'll be providing the same service we are now with curbside recycling and trash and maintaining three days open at the transfer station. I do think another point, I don't know if this is even a thought, but if you guys were looking at possibly doing away with the curbside. We believe we would need to look at land and expansion of the transfer station to be able to accommodate that type of trash.
As the transfer station moves forward, I'd like to see us redouble our efforts towards the fellows looking for stickers. I think the still portion of people are using that and are not being thoroughly checked to see that they have gotten the sticker and are in fact. Enfield residents or representative of Enfield residents.
Yeah.
Or a commercial people. From out of town.
There, there are contractors coming in and saying, I just did work at so and so's and he's from Enfield.
Yeah, and that's a no, that's a.
And that's, that's not supposed to happen.
Get pass bucks to use the.
I thought contractors weren't supposed to use it regardless.
I, I see them.
They're, they're coming in and saying, I'm working for so and so and it's happening.
I'm asking about our policy, not whether it's happening or not. I, I was understanding that contractors are not supposed to use that regardless of if they're from Enfield or working in Enfield. Is that correct? Do you know that answer, Jim?
Yeah, that's correct. We, we, we have it advertised and it's listed in our solid waste guide that the transfer station is not. The transfer station is not really set up to handle any sort of commercial volumes. And I've empowered the guys at the transfer station, I'm not sure, you know, what they're. What they do on a day to day basis, but I have said, if you see a one ton truck backing up with a huge load, I said, just. Say, you gotta go to Lebanon, you can't unload it here because. When it causes a an extra pull, you know, off time. It's extremely expensive and and the tonnage that we that we pay for. You know, when when we have to do an extra emergency pull is is very, very high, and so. You know, I I have told them to do that, we've we've hit the hit the overflow dumpsters. Twice so far this year. We typically will hit it, you know, two or three times a year, Christmas time, we always hit it. Usually Fourth of July week, if that happens to be an off trash week, we get deluged with. You know. Fish innards and and shellfish waste because people just can't stand the smell, and so they will bring that. But but again, yeah, we we did have one one weekend in May, which was unusual. But I think it was the first weekend that it was really decent weather. We'd had three or four weekends of rain and so. You know, I I did check back and the 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 tonnage on the previous weeks had been a little low, so. I think everybody just woke up one day and said, oh, it's a nice day, I'm loading up and I'm taking, you know, some stuff to the transfer station and and that's that's what happened. And so, yeah, but that's that's it, and yeah, we do encourage the guys to to send them packing if they have a. You know, if they have a load, and we've had a lot of properties transferred this year, and so there's been a lot of cleanouts, and so there's. You know, always that pressure of people, you know, I'm I'm moving out, I gotta get rid of this. I I can't get to the landfill, blah, 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 you know, we've heard every story known to man. But again, that Eric's a hundred percent right that that is listed in the solid waste guide.
As a service, I'm just saying, like, thinking out loud, as a service to our people, because I do understand what it feels like to move, right, and not necessarily know. There, could we have a voluntary list of contractors who come and do those cleanouts, right, like? Hey, you can't dump an entire house cleanout, but here's a list of folks who have asked to be, right, just and give them like a little. Pass fee and send them on their way, so it's not a hard no, it's a let us have a few resources. Of where to go, because I have seen and I. See folks from coming up the road for me, which is not Enfield going, and I'm like, there's no way, like.
We need to be a little stricter on that. The other thing is when you look at the other towns. Most of them charge something for their trash services.
And we seem to fill up the metal dumpster pretty handily. What is the situation there where we seem to attract an awful lot of metal to that dumpster?
Metal's a win for us, you know, the it's expensive to have the the thing swapped out by Schnitzer. But but we always net in the positive because the, you know, the weights, we're getting, you know, six or eight tons at. You know, a hundred bucks a ton and and that 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 pays for itself and then some, that's one of the. You know, one of the 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 positive cash flows that we do have there, especially if metal is up. And so, yeah, so people keep bringing metal in because that that's good for us.
I've been waiting for it to be empty. Very good question.
And also, I I I do think that some. And trying to establish some. Means there for people to get rid of furniture mattresses for a fee.
Lebanon does, it's an extra fee.
I know it well.
We hand them the information on how to go to Lebanon in my book. I mean, I just don't want to be the transfer agent because the whole reason our station is so small is.
Ed and I had talked a while ago, and you know, one of the ideas we'd come up with was. You know, perhaps we could have, you know, like we do with the household hazardous waste, maybe we have a. You know, a a day in the spring and a day in the fall where we. Where we handle the the bulky waste and, you know, we could put an extra guy there and we can get a roll off and and, you know, obviously we have to charge for it. But but just to have it in town, it might be a little easier for folks to. You know, to get through. I mean, going to Lebanon can be a little intimidating for a lot of folks. You know, the the guys at the Scale House are, you know, can be a little ornery at times because. People don't know the the routine, they have to have the the Enfield permit, they have to have stickers. Et cetera, so.
We we've done that in the past for a couple of years. We we had. Yeah, and for mattresses and furniture, I think in particular, just.
That I think we have to consider the additional fees, the way that Lebanon does it.
Absolutely.
I would have to not only be covered our dumping it, but it would be transitionally, because we'd be taking it.
One of the things I think overall Enfield does a great job at is keeping people from, I'm not saying no one dumps here, but I think. We do a good job helping people make good choices by providing an avenue, so. Anytime we can give them resources to make a good choice, like, I can't figure out the Lebanon ticket, I'm sure it's not that, but I started to read it and then I was like. You know, there's a dude who will come to my house and I can give him money and he already knows how to do it, and off it went.
Yeah, what what's that has bothered me about our coal trash situation for a long time is some parts of town. Really get uglified by trash toters. They overwhelm the sidewalk, I'm talking about Main Street mainly. But they overwhelm the sidewalks, they overwhelm the streets, they're ugly, people don't remove them when they're supposed to. And when they do take them off the sidewalk, they put them right on the edge of their property, so, you know. I don't know what we can do. I mean, I get private property is private property, but. Uh, there there was a mattress. Next to the road, yes. Yes.
Yeah, I just I just want to remind the board that. The harder you make for people to get rid of stuff, the more likely it is to show up on Bog Road or something, just over the bank.
Don't you mean lock even?
Whether it's furniture or tires or whatever. And then it costs ten times as much to lug it back over the bank, so just keep that in mind.
Good point.
And the the same property last year that we're couching out here, this year is a desk. That's been there for a month now. And at some point, you have to say. A free sign doesn't mean you get to keep it there free forever.
Yeah, I I agree. Dan's a hundred percent right, that 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 whole free business, and we have it here in Plainfield too, that that. We don't have a transfer station and Plainfield does not have a recycling anything. So everything has to go to Lebanon, so we have these god awful free piles that keep showing up. And I I think it might be time to update our ordinance so it deals directly with that. I I know Liam has been pretty good about, you know. If he gets a complaint on something specific like that, you know, we we can send a letter, we can stop by and say, hey, what the hell's going on? You know, we can do that, but but I think we need a little more teeth in the ordinance on these free things. And the scary thing is, is the damn free stuff, it does disappear, I mean. My father has put stuff out by the road, stuff I thought would never go, and I I was cussing him out for it, and then. We look back and it's gone, and he's like, wait, who the hell wants that? But anyway, I I think that that's definitely something we can work on, and and if you guys do see. You know, things out there that that have been there for a period of time. You know, snap a photo of it or give us a call and we'll snap a photo of it, and then, you know, if a couple of weeks goes by, we can, we can, we can deal with those things.
I think Jim's right as well.
Roy's been pretty good about it too, because I I know, you know, Blacksmith Alley is a famous place where if they clean out an apartment. Ever takes anything to the landfill, it just, they they dump mattresses there and. You know, the property manager there over the years has been a lot better about getting rid of stuff, but but they still have stuff there and and we have to go, you know. Deal with it, so.
Yeah, I I think you guys have been very good. I know I've snapped pictures over the years just because. When it's excessive and it's not getting taken care of, I don't want us to be a nanny's date, like. Free piles are fun, although I want to know if there's a free pile blacklist because I have someone I want to put on it.
Well, yeah, if if we could work on towards. Ha- having some rules with teeth, somewhat more teeth. One tooth anyway, whatever.
And then maybe.
And encouraging, the employees at the transfer station are really great guys. They are helpful. You know, they're they're polite, they're friendly, but I don't think. Looking at wind car windows with a little sticker is their priority and.
Yeah, that's right. We 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 have put a, you know, a police officer down there, you know, on a week, busy weekend before. And Roy is, you know, he's he's agreeable to doing that, but he's been very short staffed, and so. You know, that has not happened yet this year, but it's still on the list of things to do. It it's good for the police to, you know, to to have that presence and meet the meet a lot of people around town, especially the newer officers.
I think the other thing is, maybe it's an opportunity just for education for everyone where we're not picking one person out, not setting an employee up to be in. Adversarial position, it's like, hey, see your sticker. Wanted to let you know, these are the current fees, things we take, and also if you need. Help getting larger things or Lebanon's ours, like half sheet of paper. If you do it in a way that's not. Adversarial, it's a little easier, you can say, hey, you don't have a sticker. You're gonna need to get one, here's the flip side, here's the time, the town office, I don't know, something that's like. Easy, so it's not setting them up to be like, wow, let me look it up for you or having to answer, it's just.
Maybe it's as basic as a decent sign out front that says you must have a sticker. And and maybe there's at least, we're gonna get a little guilt out of people for the second trip.
Give everybody a scan tag?
We can say as much as we want, we don't put them staff into the. They have to, they have to be comfortable. If we're gonna enforce it, they have to be comfortable telling people no, that's just.
And and I think giving them the knowledge that, you know what, I understand you don't agree with us right now, if you can talk to my leader. Right, because that's what leadership is.
Some are called need to be told, go down to the town hall, get a sticker, we know you're a taxpayer, go get one.
I will say, I I find it interesting that we're the only town that offers both curbside and. A transfer station, which does provide residents a huge amount of flexibility. But also, I know we voted against it twelve years ago or whatever, but I think it is worth. At least doing a little bit of study on what. A paper throw at the transfer station would mean. And at least evaluating that idea again.
I really think as as prices of things go up and more people are feeling. Stretched financially, they're going to find a lot of stuff on the roads. I remember the days when, you know, I I didn't drive down the Bog Road because it was just discouraging.
And we can talk about things like putting a limit on what someone's allowed to throw at the transfer station, for example, you might be limited to. Two to four bags or something like that, so can't accept the whole house cleanouts.
Yeah, like when I'm in behind a contractor truck, right, that's a three quarter ton, clearly it's a work truck, it's filled with. Clear construction, and then there's something in bags and it's full and the whole thing's going in the dumpster, I think. Maybe betting some metrics for people where you're like, that's a really large truck to throw the whole thing in, that's not a household.
There is some rule there, there there's a little sign, I forget what it is, one pickup truck load. Or something like that.
Yeah, that's about right.
And I just asked Ed, and I know this is something that can't be answered tonight, I just wanted to throw out, like. You know, are there alternatives for further recycling that isn't. More expensive, right, where you might pay for it, but you pay less than throwing it away. And those all take space and management, so I'm like, I just am saying it out loud, like, one of the things I know we throw away a lot of is. Styrofoam, right, it's tons of styrofoam that's not, you can't dissolve it. And then really just talking to people about how much box for it they go through, because. The Amazon, I'm gonna pick on Amazon because they're an easy target. The number of cardboard boxes I see, heck, I do it, but honestly, I recycle mine back into the air through fire, but. We go through a lot of boxes there.
At least those you can recycle, right?
You can, but we're still.
Styrofoam, it it's hopeless.
Styrofoam's straight up trash, but we still.
We are still paying for recycling.
Gone are the days where we got.
The market has dropped off.
That was my biggest.
There really isn't any opportunity to break even on recycling now, it costs all the town.
Costs a little bit less than the normal trash?
It would be most likely more per ton to to do, to process recycling moving forward, because. Those costs have gone up ever since the China stopped taking plastic, it's really.
Oh, are we even gonna pretend that we offer recycling?
What happens, Jim, if we convert both dumpsters to straightforward garbage? Is that gonna cost us more money, do you think?
It it won't today, but I mean, you know, sooner or later, if we if we keep putting everything in the Lebanon landfill, it it will, I mean, they're they're gonna run out of space sooner if. If everybody does that and.
Cycling, are they still going back to Hartford and sorting through it themselves, or are they kidding us and throwing it away when they can?
No, it goes to it goes to the the Rutland Processing Plant, there's a, there's a big zero sort plant out there. But, you know, there there are on any given day, if they get a contaminated load, if they get. You know, some stuff that doesn't have a home, it 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 might, you know, get put into a landfill and that's the, you know, that's the reality of it. But but, you know, at the moment, right now, they're they're, you know, moving, cardboard is is great, paper is great. You know, glass is becoming the big, the big problem now because glass is quite heavy to move and handle. And there really isn't a good, you know, market for glass, so. You know, I I would not be surprised if they called me up, you know, tomorrow and said. Okay, you know, glass is no longer going in the zero sort stream, it's it's gotta go in the garbage.
I asked that question of it today, once upon a time, I remember us having a fun little shredder, because when you're a kid, things like that are awesome.
When I saw that work, I said, not no, but hell no. There was glass flying everywhere. With people walking all around, no eye protection, no nothing. I said, no, that mill is gone.
Is there a safe way to handle it? That's really, I'm not asking again for tonight. I I, you know, because it was, it's one of those memories where when you're a kid, everything looks kind of cool, and as an adult, you're like. That could be a really bad idea, but then the question. Safe and better way to handle it, right, other than sharks flying everywhere, because glass, like you said, is heavy, and I think that is the next thing that's gonna go.
It was an extreme. Cost, I could probably get some data, but Springfield, Vermont collected it when I was in Weatherfield. And they started talking about charging for it because they had to bring in tumblers to take the sharp edges off, and there's just a lot.
And why do we tell people all the time, buy things in glass because it's just plastic?
I'm not allowed to keep any more jars, no matter how clever I think they are or pretty.
So where are we going with this?
We just need a little direction of what we'd like to do. I still recommend we move forward with extending the Casella contract. And we can look at other options.
Yeah, I am biting my tongue to say this, but I agree.
I I mean, I don't think, we're not gonna save money if we go the other way, that's my biggest concern, right, if I thought we were gonna save a bunch of money and be like, it's a free for all. But developing a new space and that all saves time. Well, yeah, not too, I mean. Nobody likes to pay for trash, but I said to Ed today, one of the best things, my personal opinion is one of the best things you can do in life, is ship your trash. And your sewage to someone else and. Oh, I'm just saying, right, that it's not your problem anymore, and it's not collecting in your town. We live on a lake in a nice town and. It's a little, you pay a little bit to get it out and off your plate.
It's expensive, I think that we need to look at ways that we can reduce the cost over time, but to do to get more of the better services we provide.
And I think, and it's for twenty dollars a month per household.
Because if you go to replace that yourself, it's significant.
And we're not gonna, towns aren't gonna save a full twenty dollars per household savings because we're gonna have to.
Have it somewhere else.
Didn't you quote us a figure the other day?
Our transfer station would have to increase, so we'd have.
Fifty bucks. Fifty bucks if you want.
I think we just provide the rules that are necessary for Jim to support the program. Increase the signage if that's what's the way to go. Buy whatever support we can to the employees there to do the best that they can do.
So my plan will be to. Work with Jim, we'll meet with Casella, we'll get those prices, and we'll report back to you before we sign a contract.
Great.
Next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have award Lakeside Park engineering RFQ.
I sent you today, and it is in your printed packet for tonight, so. Over the weekend, I had opened and reviewed three. RFQ that we got back for the Lakeside Park parking lot that you guys approved a few months ago, and then the Stillma Lakeside Park. Committee has approved a landscaping plan that I did not bring to the select board because it's more. Plants and smaller stuff, that's not as, not as solid as a parking lot, but. not as solid as a parking lot. But um with that, we went ahead and released an RFQ to look for an engineer to oversee the engineering permitting and assistance with construction. We received three back, one from Greenman Patterson Incorporated, one from Devoicing King, as you guys know, is doing our invasive species project, and then Pathways Engineering. Um, after reviewing the RFQs, I looked at our timeline again and decided that I thought it would be best to go with one of the two qualified engineering firms that have an idea of what the Lakeside Park project is already. And then moving through that, I was a little bit impressed with Pathway that they had done the research and figured out that Michael Burns had done the Lakeside Park plan for the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee, reached out to him and brought him in on part as a part of the team. Uh, Michael did a great job. He's one of our residents. He did a great job working with the Mascoma Lake Association to produce that plan. I think it was a a good move on Pathways Park to bring him onto their team. So with that, I would recommend awarding the contract to Pathways Engineering for the Lakeside Park Engineering Permitting and Construction.
Can you repeat the piece about the invasive species report?
Devoicing King is the engineering firm that's doing our invasive species plan. So they've been in Lakeside Park. They know what we're trying to do there. So that's where I narrowed it down to those two firms. Really understand the project we're trying to do already, where not that the third firm couldn't do it, but it would be starting from ground zero. Kind of explaining the history and what we're doing there, and those two firms already know that. And then looking through just the two RFQs of those two, I was impressed that Pathways brought on Michael Burns, who's already been working on the project.
What um, what was, I mean, what was the dollar amount?
Um, there really isn't a dollar amount on the RFQ.
Okay.
There's, who knows on the permitting, all those things, because so we really just look for a qualified engineering firm that can do this and pick the ones we can go do the best job for.
And it will come directly out of the Lakeside Park.
It'll come out of the Lakeside Park Fund and the LTWS grant.
Um, do you guys wanna have a discussion? Does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to authorize town manager to enter a contract with Pathways Consulting LLC to the engineering permitting and construction assistance of the Lakeside Park Parking and Landscaping Project. And further authorize a town manager or their designate to take all actions and execute all documents as necessary.
We have a second.
Second.
Good. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. We are moving down to HOP Grant Acceptance. HOP is Housing Opportunity Planning. I should just take a quick sidebar and say I got a very reasonable request from a resident, um, that when we say things like CIP at some point, we say capital improvement planning. And I thought, oh, that's fair. So this is me correcting myself and just sharing that with folks. If you catch me, um, feel free to remind everybody, because I I I get it. We use these all the time, but not everybody does.
That's a good point.
So yeah, as we talked earlier, um, David Frack and Rob, we did a lot of work applying for the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant and for to rewrite zoning. I know they do plan on using the same consultant that we use for our master plan. She's on the approved list, so you know, not only, as Eric said, that the master planning will be guiding zoning, but the consultant that we had write the master plan will be writing the zoning as well. So I think that's a an important correlation that she understands what what people want in the town as well.
I I think it's actually important to move that the master plan is largely what qualified us for this grant, because this is a housing opportunities related grant, and it's because we have a new master plan, which has a very good housing chapter that ties in with what the community wants, that they even accepted our grant. So the master plan largely even means qualified for this. So I think that whole committee should really feel proud of their work.
And I will say David did a great job because him and Rob attended a few back and forth conversations with them, and this truly is only to rewrite housing sections. And they did a good job of showing how all of these sections with the master plan tie into our complete zoning bylaws and.
Thank you to David and Rob for that work. Did you guys wanna further discussion? You wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Housing Opportunity Planning Planning Grant awarded by the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Grant Program in the amount of six two thousand three hundred forty-four dollars for the purposes of rewriting the town of Enfield's zoning bylaw and hereby authorize the town manager or their designees to take such action and execute all documents that may be necessary.
We have a second.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on that, and to David and Rob again for their hard work and all the committees who also. Going on to acceptance of donations to Mascoma Lakeside Park Trust Fund. Five thousand fifty dollars in aggregate. You have the list in your pocket. I would accept a motion to accept with thanks.
I uh move that we accept the donations and grants, the amount of oh, sorry. Forget it. I lost my place.
Five thousand fifty dollars?
Five thousand fifty dollars in aggregate.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes unanimously. Thank you. Strategic planning restraint date. Break out your calendars, kids.
So I'd like to look at a two or three dates that we can do here. Um, as Russ told us the last time he was here. On vacation in the beginning of June, so not here for me to ask, but I do think that we can still off our calendars soon, that we're not gonna not gonna be able to make time.
My June is mostly Thursday, but there's just a general um question I wanna answer before we start playing the which date works game, and that is, what is the preference of the board? Do you want to try to pound this out in a session on a weekend? Do you wanna try to do an evening meeting? I know many people sit in meetings all day. Um, do you you have any latitude to maybe cut out early in the afternoon, do an afternoon, early evening?
What were you estimating for time?
I think he wanted to do somewhere in the four hour range.
On two different days?
On one day.
Or singular day, four hours?
That's what he was kinda thinking. Let's just get him, get it done. Get through it. And I can say that I've sat through a couple of these and that first hour or so is really getting into the swing of things. And if you do go uh three quarters of time and you get more done in a shorter amount of time than trying to come back together and get everybody, get the momentum going.
I will not be good in the evening. I am actually learning that for sure right now. You think as a weekend more something time? Eric, I know you have travel and.
Yeah, but I can, but I can figure it out. I've basically got two weeks where that I would not be available from the twenty fourth of June until the ninth of July. But other than that, I can probably be quite flexible.
I'm not really around Saturdays on the second and fourth Saturday, because I'm at the Enfield Market.
Is it true that there's no market on the twenty fourth?
Yeah, I totally booked that day, but.
No, because I just.
No, yeah, it traditionally.
There's only one this month.
There's no market because the fair is in town. So instead of moving it, we just do there. Um, so I'm pretty sure we wanna have my kids.
We're really moving. We're running out of time.
Yeah, no, that's really, I don't know why my kid's calling me.
When does it have to be?
I don't think we really have a timeframe. We were trying to move this along to have some idea going into budget.
Right.
Yeah. We were hoping to do something at the end of June, but it may be closer to the end of July.
Uh, I can do Sun. No, I'm lying. Sunday afternoon.
I'm pretty flexible.
That's really, John, are you retired?
Any day, right?
So jealous. I could do just throwing a date out. I could do, I don't know Sundays or not. Probably everyone's like, great love. I can do Sunday, June twenty fifth, after one o'clock.
I'll be out of town.
You'll be out.
I can't do Sunday, June twenty fifth. That's the shaker seven.
Seven race.
Right, that's why I'm already triple booked. I already tossed one thing off my plate and added two more. This is um.
The only time in June on a weekend that I could do would be the seventeenth or the eighteenth.
That's Father's Day.
Yeah, I can't, I actually can't do that. I I may be driving my son to Logan.
Okay, yeah, I have no, that Saturday I already have booked, and I think my, I should show up for Father's Day just to you know. It depends, but I'm into Ja, I'm into July for Weekend third.
I'm into the end of July. Probably late, late July, by then.
Uh, what is the?
Twenty ninth.
That's my birthday.
Oh, my gosh, we can have cake.
That's why I'm gonna need to have this.
I'm not.
Uh, wait. There is a flash dance T-Rex party on my calendar.
What about us?
On the twenty ninth? I'm too tired. You know, the best.
No, for real, there's a flash dance T-Rex party for Alice's birthday. We can just move it. Just figured. Okay, so Saturday, the twenty ninth, isn't the world's greatest thing. What about Sunday? Oh. Um, wait, was the fifteenth an option?
The twenty third or.
I can do Sundays. I mean.
I can't do this.
Selectment is like church to me.
I mean, I can, I can skip church too. That's the other thing. Don't tell them.
Twenty third or thirtieth of July would work.
July.
July twenty third.
Or thirty.
Send Donna a birthday note about her birthday and show up another day. Um, she can have her birthday on Saturday. Um, I could do July twenty third.
Yeah, twenty third is good.
Yeah. Let us go.
I'm gonna be feeling well on the third.
Sunday, July twenty.
After dancing on the T-Rex. A mainstream, yeah.
Okay, I will reach out to Russ and see if we can.
I don't think we're getting him extra days, I'm afraid. If not, I think maybe throw, are we allowed to do a doodle that responds to, no, because I only can't see it. I don't know.
We can do a doodle. We can, we're allowed to converse and get a date for a meeting, as long as we're not talking.
Because we could be here.
Right, right.
Okay, yeah, otherwise throw a doodle together if it doesn't work.
No, we'll start. It might end up having to be a.
Cause we're gonna post.
An evening or two.
Okay.
Make it happen, or we're not gonna make it happen.
Oh.
I knew we were getting into vacations and everything.
Uh, you know, we, I don't even know if we wanna touch this. Remember we talked about barbecue date?
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
Okay, all right.
Only other thing I think we should talk about, it's not on the calendar, but it's the July third meeting.
Oh, right, we were gonna do that under town manager. Um, so July third. Does anybody really wanna have a meeting?
I will be out of town and unable to attend.
I'll be out of town, but I could attend resolutely.
Okay.
I will be out of town.
Yeah, I think that unless you, I think. Where we just cancel, and if you have something that needs a signature in a timely fashion, we'll all commit to picking a date around that and doing a post the meeting. Yeah, okay. So we're agreed that it's canceling?
Yeah.
Okay, love it. All right, is that?
There was a time when in the summer, we only did that once a month.
I think we've done that, but we usually just cancel and meet once a month. It just happened. Yeah, I think that one goes by the wayside. All right, administrative items, there's some timber items. Unless somebody wants to chat about them, we're gonna continue on um to the other business. Gary, public comment.
Hey, thank you very much. Okay, so I'll stick to my guns first. The high back chair really blocks view from back here. When we had, when we had a full, when we had a full crowd. Okay, so there's that. And uh, it's like we're meeting minutes for May first. Uh, last bullet on page two, where I asked Ed about the DCL exhaust system being uh, not included in the original budget. Uh, Ed came back with the absolute perfect answer that he didn't know because he was not here at the time. The comment that is, that is written in the in the minutes is pure fiction. It says that uh, Ed, Ed Moore, Mr. Moore stated that no one said it wasn't in the budget. That's not true. He stated he didn't know, which is incorrect.
We'll review the.
Yeah.
Video.
Thank you. We'll remand that one back to Ed.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comments?
Oh, yeah. Uh, so getting back to the MFAK, uh, May twenty third, uh meeting minutes. Yeah, I I've been an advocate for uh net zero on this facility.
Wait, are you on MFAK minutes or are you on select board?
MFAK.
Okay, that's going back to MFAK or to him. We're not gonna entertain it in this meeting. It's not on the agenda. And as far as I know, we aren't covering MFAK.
Well, if it's changing minutes, if he wants to comment on them for the select.
Yeah, you can give it, I mean, I'd rather that he give it to you and the committee to change, not to us. I don't wanna get in the business.
Yeah, if it's changing.
Changing other committees' minutes.
Oh, I don't wanna change minutes, no.
You wanna comment on.
I wanna comment.
Okay.
On what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, like I said, I've been an advocate for net zero on this building since day one. And the the board has provided lip service that they they were sort of behind net zero. And they would make as close to net zero as we possibly can. But I I noticed in the latest go around, now we're doing propane backup. So nobody wanted to commit to electricity. That's sort of the whole thing behind net zero. I mean, you have a generator that's gonna produce electricity. You're gonna have battery backup that's gonna store electricity. You're gonna have solar panels that are gonna produce electricity. Do you have a magic machine that produces propane? Probably not. So we're just doing this DPW thing where we're going the cheapest route we possibly can. I I I'm just, I'm just not buying it. I mean, I I I I've talked with you, Ed, about the 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 ICF, the advantages of it. I've given you video links where in Canada, they built an office building, they shut the heat down minus thirty degrees. Three days later, the temperature only went down five degrees. Are we calculating that into this construction of this building? Or is it, I mean, do do we, do we actually have, now that we, now that we have a a figure, do we know what kind of insulation is going in this thing? Do we have specification? Yeah, for the hundred thou.
We have a bunch of different R values that we've discussed in different parts of the building.
Do they have a spec for the building?
They're working on it.
Okay, do we have, do we have an energy usage target for this building in KBTU?
I think this though goes back to the MFAK committee, right? This is select board, if there was, if you felt like there was malfeasance or no one was listening to you, but if you're asking for specifications, this is a committee matter, not a select board matter. We have delegated that portion to the committee and I gentleman can wreck wreck me if I'm wrong.
Well, I can also say just for the select board's usage that this, you know, yes, it sounds great to have this is the target we're doing, but the goal was also to move from the specked out building as close to net zero as we can get while staying within the budget, which means it may not get to where we wanna get.
And propane does that is does not get you to net zero.
No, but it staying within the budget is part of it, a big part of it.
I think this board has been very honest about being committed to staying within the budget, and I think we've heard in meeting after meeting for people who are very concerned about their taxes. And while many of us in our own hearts may wanna do net zero, that we're not, we don't have a magic pocket of money.
It's not a magic pocket of money, Kate, but you know, we're going the cheap route, building this thing. But then you've got fifty years operating expense for this building that are gonna affect the pockets of the board and field taxpayers. And that could be zero rather than thirty thousand dollars a year forever.
There's no such thing as zero. There's no such thing as things costing zero. We all know.
People in Kentucky figured that out, and they get, and they get paid back every year.
Well, buildings cost money no matter what.
They cost money, yes, but it's not always first cost.
So I think that needs to go back to MFAK. If you have concerns on that, that is not a select board matter unless somebody else wants to address it.
No, I don't think that we're the experts on this.
We're certainly not.
And so I would prefer that the experts, the people who've been really studying this and making decisions about it, um, that you take it up with them.
You're still.
I'm not gonna address it at this.
No, no, but I think you're still on that committee, so, okay.
If you're interested. If you're interested, the M-FAC committee is an open meeting and you can attend.
I understand that, but I also work on Tuesdays.
All right, do you have other public comments?
I think that's it.
Doug?
I just wanna echo what Kate brought up earlier about the Conservation Commission. Um, I had to get off the Conservation Commission because I had three separate obligations on Thursday nights. Unfortunately, Conservation Commission was referred by invasions. But I watched this month's meeting where Chief Holland is a very respected member of this community. Had to go before that board and demand to know why somebody had gone behind his back to DES and other things, which is completely unnecessary and wrong. And he unilaterally acted on his own without bringing it before the Conservation Commission. Um, has the board ever considered having a set of rules for all boards where chairs are directed as to what they can and can't do? And this is just one more that I know that's had a problem with this individual several times within the past year acting unilaterally um, against, and the other people on the board just seem to go along with it for some reason. I don't know why. But it really bothered me, uh, and coming from public safety and having great respect for Chief Holland, to see him be treated that way by a board member. And it kind of upset me, uh, the way he was treated by that individual, the chairman. That really bothers me.
I think, so my understanding, and you can correct me, is that we're, boards overall are governed by state law and then there's, there are some things, like conservation is responsible to DES for dredge.
Dredge bill permit, some different guidances, so.
Right, but at, at the end of the tape, most of it's outlined in law or administrative rules. I think the expectation is clear that no board acts unilaterally, right? You might, there's a very rare occasion, and I would say it should be an emergency, that any chair should act unilaterally. Typically, the chair's job is to guide the meeting, right? And to call on people. And other than that, you're just a member. You're just one vote. And so if for some reason you were put into a position where a decision urgently had to be made, you should be immediately calling some kind of emergency meeting or finding a mechanism, a legal way to alert people, be it through the town manager's office, right? And so I personally do not see any occasion in which you should be going after a private individual in such a way.
And this person did not go to Mr. Morris, to the best of my knowledge, did not go to anybody. And he did not go to the property owner and say, hey, I have a concern with what you're doing, which would have been the right thing to do. And get explained, hey, I've got all my permits. I've had somebody go in and do all my reviews and I've dotted all my eyes crossed, all my keys. And had this person go behind his back was completely wrong.
I did take the opportunity to remind the full Conservation Board, just like every board, um, as elected officials or appointed officials, we are an extension of government. And by that extension, you can't just go tromping onto somebody's property to conduct government business. So I did read out the RSA as a point of information because I think one of the things I, I feel, um, and this is my personal feeling, is that we haven't always given every board the attention they need or the onboarding or the training, right? So it's an opportunity to educate, um, but that, given the number of times we've run into things like this, I think it goes beyond just a simple education issue. So I, I think we will be revisiting it. Um, it certainly was a very challenging meeting. And if you have time to watch it, it's on YouTube. It is long.
It's the second time a similar event has happened within the past calendar year.
I will be sending something out soon and I'll get you the, the timeframes in the meeting, so you don't have to watch the whole one.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the only question I have is, was this person acting like as a citizen filing complaint to DES or were they were acting on behalf of the board?
They stated that they were doing it as chair and that they had the right, and when they were corrected, that it should have been an, an action that was at least communicated if there was some kind of urgent reason, um, they did not take that into consideration.
Just out of curiosity, that individual set foot upon landowner's land?
We are not sure.
Not that we know of.
We don't think he needs to because everything that Roy is doing is visible right from the street. And he's cleared from the street backwards. So all the trees are, but it's also obvious that he has not gone down to the pond, which would be.
So you will see that and we can make a decision whether we wanna discuss it more or not.
Yep, and I think we'll just continue to work on developing boards and leadership and, and really trying because I think there are a lot of people with a lot of talents. But, um, it's important that they learn and be committed to the continual learning that has to be done and, and not, um, dictator, it's not dictatorship, so. Um, are there other public comments? There's some folks online. Um, I believe we have a non-public.
We do?
Yeah. Appointing method is ill.
Yeah. Wait, we just need to do it and get it done. And then we're gonna go home and maybe that's why my kid called me. Um, I will entertain a motion to go into non-public, I didn't motion, I can't remember anymore. Motion to go a non-public session for RSA ninety-one A, that's three, colon, Roman numeral two. Yeah, it says dot, small c, it's just c, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion and then. That's cool as well. Okay, Alice, and then we seem to go down low hall, right, for this one? So it's a yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, and yeah, okay. We are now in a non-public session. I will check it over and you guys are welcome.